All right, that's a pretty fast connection to YouTube there. So with that said, since we're now live streaming on YouTube, this is the regular Planning Commission meeting for May 26, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And as the Chair, I will call this meeting to order. In accordance with Governor Newsom's executive orders in 2020 and then 3520 and COVID-19 pandemic protocols, this meeting is being conducted via virtual setting using Zoom. Planning Commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations, and everyone is practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public were given the opportunity to join and listen to the meeting live, as noted on the agenda. These are unprecedented times, but we are committed to continuing the essential work of the city as we do so in accordance with Alameda County's Shelter in Place Order. Please stand, and I'll have Commissioner Nybert lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Hey, I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance
to the flag
to the flag
of the United States of America
of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Super dog. All right. And we will now move on to the roll call. So I'll ask the Recording Secretary to conduct the roll call. Our names will be written in alphabetical order and by last name.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Gatos?
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Nybert?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Present.
Looks like Commissioner Pace is absent, but we do have a quorum.
All right, that sounds great. Staff, are there any Agenda amendments?
No amendments in the agenda.
All right, so we'll move on to the Consent Calendar, which is Agenda Item 1. Consent Calendar items are considered routine. It will be enacted by one motion unless a request for removal for discussion or explanation is received from the Planning Commission or a member of the public by having previously submitted a speaker card for that item. I don't think so, but does anyone have any questions on the consent items? Since for tonight, it's just the actions of the zoning administrator?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So at this time, I'll ask for any discussion or a motion from any of my colleagues for approval of the Consent Calendar.
I'll move approval of the Consent Calendar for tonight.
All right, sounds great. Thank you, Vice Chair. Any second?
I'll second it.
All right. I don't know. I'll let the Recording Secretary know who that was. All right, so since the item's been seconded, I'll just do a roll call vote. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Commissioner Nybert?
Aye.
And Commissioner Pace is absent unless he's just joined, and aye from myself. So that's five votes with no opposed. So moving right along, we'll move on to the Public Comments section of the agenda. And at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission regarding items not listed on the agenda. Normally, no action may be considered or taken on any matter not listed on the agenda, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Staff, do we have any requests to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
No, currently, there are no requests to speak on items not listed on the agenda.
All right, that sounds good. Then I will open and close Agenda Item 2 and move on to Agenda Item 3, which is the Public Hearings and Other Matters. And so tonight, we have a public hearing to consider applications for a Plan Unit Development rezoning, to rezone the subject parcel from CR, Regional Commercial Peripheral Sites, to PUD-CO, which is Plan Unit Development Commercial Office District, a PUD development plan to construct up to three new multi-story research and development office and laboratory buildings totaling approximately 381,000 square feet, a parking structure and related site improvements over multiple phases, as well as Item 3 would be to make a finding of general plan conformity for a related development agreement to vest the entitlements for the PUD rezoning and development plan for 1701 Springdale Avenue, aka 10X Genomics. And so at this time, staff, could we please get an Agenda report for this item?
Thank you, Chair Brown and other members of the Commission. Give me just one sec while I pull up my screen here. Okay, everybody can see that?
We can, Eric.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Okay, this item comprises applications from 10X Genomics for the property at 1701 Springdale Avenue and proposed to rezone the subject parcel from Regional Commercial District to Plan Unit Development Commercial Office District. Secondly, the applications propose to establish a Plan Unit Development Plan to construct up to three new multi-story office, laboratory, and research and development buildings totaling approximately 381,000 square feet, a parking structure, and related site improvements over multiple phases. Additionally, as Chair Brown mentioned, there will be a development agreement on this project with the city and 10X to vest the entitlements for the project. PUD rezoning and development plan applications are required since the proposed mix of land uses are not expressly allowed by the current zoning, and the planned master campus layout of the proposed site improvements require flexibility and relief from the prescribed development standards of the current zoning district, which are typically considered on a case-by-case basis pursuant to the municipal code. A development agreement is also being proposed between the applicant and the city to vest the proposed entitlements and requires the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation to the City Council regarding whether the proposed development agreement conforms with the general plan. As some of you will recall, the applications were previously reviewed by the Planning Commission as a work session item on November 18, 2020. The applications presented here and have been revised to reflect the comments received at that work session. The applications are now before the Planning Commission for recommendations to the City Council for consideration. These recommendations will be summarized by staff on a separate slide at the end of the presentation. As shown on this slide, the approximately 14 and 1/2 acre site, which is outlined in red, is relatively flat and vacant except for an approximately 600 space surface-level parking lot, which formerly served an approximately 163,000 square foot commercial shopping center on the site. The shopping center was recently demolished, and because of the recency of this demolition, the former shopping center still appears in this aerial photograph. Locationally, the site is situated between Stone Ridge Mall to the north and the Kaiser Medical Office Facility to the west. A mix of office and residential uses exists to the south across Stone Ridge Drive and east across Stone Ridge Mall Road, including the applicant's two existing locations at 6210 and 6230 Stone Ridge Mall Road, which are outlined in this photograph in yellow. Interstate 580 and 680 are situated nearby to the north and the east respectively, and the BART Dublin West Pleasanton Station is within half mile of the subject site to the north. Current access is provided to the subject site off of three existing driveways, one off Springdale Avenue and two off Stone Ridge Mall Road. Oops, sorry, I'm going backwards. Here we go. The proposed project would include development of a new master plan campus for 10X Genomics, a biotechnology life sciences company. 10X Genomics is already headquartered in Pleasanton and operates existing facilities within the Stone Ridge Corporate Plaza across from the subject site and at Coal Center. The new campus is intended to allow 10X Genomics to consolidate and expand these existing operations with a multi-phase build-out over the next several years. Phase 1, shown on this slide, in which the applicant would seek to develop in the long term, or excuse me, in the near term, includes the construction of an approximately 150,000 square foot two- and three-story building commonly referred to as Building 1. This building will be located at the northern portion of the site. This building would be approximately 53 feet tall to the top of the parapet line and 65 feet tall to the top of the equipment screen. Approximately 483 surface parking spaces would be provided for Building 1, which is equivalent to approximately 3.2 spaces per 1,000 square feet of building area. These parking spaces would utilize a portion of the existing surface parking lot that was left over from the existing retail center, and this existing parking lot would be partially restriped and resurfaced, have some upgraded lighting, some landscaping, and new sidewalk access. Phase 1 would also include construction of a new plaza at the northeast portion of the site with pedestrian circulation connections from the proposed campus to Stone Ridge Mall, BART, and the adjacent office and residential developments. Additionally, this plaza would also be a designated facility to connect pedestrians within the campus to the other portions that will be developed at a later time. The balance of the subject site beyond Building 1 would be temporarily fenced off under Phase 1 and would be planted with native grasses. As I mentioned, there would be subsequent phases of the development somewhere either between 2 and 3, and those subsequent phases, the timing of which is to be determined by 10X as needed, is expected to be completed by 2030. And that would include construction of an additional 231,000 square feet of building area within one or two additional buildings generally along the east side of the site. This plan shows these buildings in the approximate locations and are set back between 150 and 100 feet from all site frontages. However, this plan also shows a 32-foot minimum setback line, meaning that the future buildings could be shifted anywhere within the minimum setback area as the applicant continues to refine their master plan. The applicant proposes a maximum height at these later phases would be approximately 67 feet to the top of the parapet and 82 feet to the top of the equipment roof screen. In addition, from the work session, staff indicated that there was recorded agreements between the owners of the adjacent Stone Ridge Mall and the subject site where the required parking to be at a ratio of four spaces per 1,000 square feet. This ratio that's required is typically higher than what's required by our municipal code for these types of land uses, and it could result in the project being overparked based on the project's anticipated employee density, its proximity to BART, and also potential for carpooling and ride sharing. Additionally, since the work session, the applicant has reached out to the Stone Ridge Mall owners to allow for an overall parking ratio of 3.3 per 1,000 square feet for the entire campus master plan at build-out. To achieve this ratio, the later phases of the project would include construction of a parking structure providing approximately 1,172 parking spaces in six levels and 80 surface-level parking spaces along the west side of the site. The proposed project would continue to utilize all existing driveways that I previously described, with most of the vehicular access focused off Springdale Avenue, which would provide the main ingress and egress to and from the parking areas. Building 1 would have an entry and drop-off access from the existing driveway off the Ring Road segment of Stone Ridge Mall Road. Building 1's service entry would be screened and integrated into the building design with access from both existing driveways off Springdale Avenue and off the Ring Road segment of Stone Ridge Mall Road. Buildings 2 and 3 would also have entry and drop-off access points from the existing driveway off Stone Ridge Mall Road at the existing signalized intersection with McWilliams Lane. Buildings 2 and 3 would have a single service entry screen and integrate it into the building design with access from the existing driveway off Springdale Avenue. All parking would be situated along the west side of the site and access primarily from the existing driveway off Springdale Avenue. Additionally, pedestrian and bicycle facilities would be provided, and the proposal for that would be a walkway and bicycle lane along the eastern side of the property and a shared pedestrian and bicycle path along the north side of the property, as well as along the sidewalks. The traffic study recommended a Class 4 bicycle facility on the north side of the property in the form of a two-way cycle track. However, the applicant has indicated that there are some concerns about feasibility of this improvement due to the location of utilities in a joint trench along the portion of the site's frontage, and thus has proposed the shared path which are included on these plans. Although the Class 4 facility is preferred by the city's traffic engineer, the proposed facility could be deemed an acceptable alternative. The project includes a landscape and planting plan that integrates new perimeter and interior landscaping. Several of the existing 159 trees on site are located within parking areas proposed to be removed, necessitating tree removal of trees during various phases of the project. Despite the redevelopment, there would still be some significant tree preservation within Phase 1. Approximately 98 of 159 existing trees would be preserved during Phase 1, and at build-out, an additional 64 of the 159 trees would remain on-site. However, both phases would have tree removal mitigation included within them and would be caused by replanting elsewhere on the site. The landscaping approach would allow portions of the site and around the perimeter that would not be developed in future phases to have upgraded landscaping in the near term. As previously noted, in Phase 1, the interior of the site and on portions not used for parking would be fenced off and seeded with native grasses, anticipating development in the future. The new landscaping tree and plant palette provides a wide range of native drought-tolerant materials consistent with the city's water efficiency landscape ordinance. Currently, only Building 1 has its architecture developed in detail. As I mentioned, Buildings 2 and 3 are much more conjectural and conceptual at this time. However, the expectation is later buildings would conform to the building envelope area established by the PUD development plan with architecture that is complementary to and compatible with Building 1. This slide provides a rendering of what the campus could look like at full build-out, although staff is recommending development in future phases to be subject to separate design review and approval. The next several slides will provide a high-level overview and description of the architecture for Building 1. Additional details, including specifics related to color, finishes, and materials, are provided in the Agenda Report and Exhibit B to the Agenda Report. As shown here in these elevations, Building 1 is a contemporary uniquely designed structure featuring layered panel architecture, which creates a rhythmic architectural pattern. This rhythmical pattern is complemented by significant portions of glazing at the building entrances as well as on all four elevations as shown in this rendering of the southeastern side of the building. This elevation also provides a snapshot of the recessed balcony on the third floor, which is oriented towards the middle of the campus. As seen here, to minimize massing, the building's design incorporates significant wallplane movement as well as both horizontal and vertical architectural elements, changes to architectural element sizing and height, and changes in material textures and colors throughout the various elevations. To maintain the clean and contemporary lines of the design scheme, all rooftop equipment would be screened by a decorative standing scene metal screen shown on this slide. Additionally, the service and delivery area and the fully enclosed trash and recycling area are both integrated architecturally into the building design and are located at the southwest corner of the building. At the work session, the Commission expressed some concerns related to the proposed 32-foot-wide minimum setback and requested more information to illustrate how the proposed building heights and minimum setbacks for all phases would affect surrounding development. This slide provides a response to that request and visually demonstrates the relationship between the project and existing development. The top and middle illustrations show the project's relationship with the existing residential developments to the east and the south respectively, while the third illustration shows the project's relationship with the future residential development on the Sidemen property to the north. Additionally, Exhibit B to staff report includes a shade-and-shadow study to reflect the project's effects on surrounding development from that perspective, in which staff will touch on a little bit more detail in the presentation. In terms of analysis, staff's presentation will focus on these nine topics. Each of these topics will be covered with a dedicated slide. First would be general plan conformance. The site's current general plan land use designation permits office uses. R&amp;D and laboratory uses are not separately defined or identified as land use categories in the municipal code. However, both are listed among a broad range of potential uses in the municipal code's definition of light industrial. Research and development and laboratory uses are not expressly permitted in the CR district either. Thus, the project would be consistent with the general plan land use designation if the subject site is rezoned to PUD, which is a more flexible zoning category and for which the types and parameters of allowable uses for this project would be specified. The proposed office uses would be permitted under the current and proposed zoning districts. Additionally, the general plan indicates the average allowable development density or intensity, which is expressed as floor-area ratio, should be 35% with a maximum of FAR of 60%. Program 15.5 of the land use element indicates industrial, retail, and office projects should conform to the average density assumed of 35%. However, projects may be allowed to increase their FAR to as high as 60% provided sufficient amenities and mitigations are incorporated into the project to justify the increased density. FAR in the CR zoning district is determined on a case-by-case basis, but generally stays within the same range as prescribed by the general plan. As such, the subject site may have an FAR of up to 60% for the proposed uses if the Commission finds sufficient amenities and mitigations are incorporated. While more detail will be provided later in the presentation, based on the sales tax discussion and the development agreement amended discussion in the Agenda Report, staff supports the increased FAR to the project. Additionally, the Agenda Report lists and summarizes several general plan goals, policies, and programs the project is consistent with or would promote, as well as cap shot it as being incorporated into the project. Accordingly, staff believes the project conforms with the general plan and is recommending the Commission make a favorable recommendation to the City Council. Topic 2 covers PUD rezoning and uses. As mentioned, the applicant is proposing to rezone the subject site to Planning and Development Commercial Office to allow for a mix of R&amp;D, office, and laboratory land uses. Because the former retail center that occupied the site suffered from a lack of investment and had difficulty maintaining tenant occupancy over the past decade, staff believes the proposed project is an opportunity to redevelop the site with a high-quality campus-style project, consistent with other similar projects in the immediate vicinity of Stone Ridge Mall, such as Workday. As previously mentioned, 10X Genomics is already headquartered in Pleasanton and operates existing facilities with a similar profile of use at Stone Ridge Corporate Plaza across from the site and also at Coal Center. The applicant seeks to build a master plan campus that would consolidate and allow for some expansion of their existing administrative operations and R&amp;D activities onto one site. R&amp;D and laboratory uses are included among a broad list of uses within the light industrial land use classification description in the municipal code. The specific nature of the applicant's proposed uses include highly specialized technical activities, including R&amp;D, small-scale assembly of instruments, consumables, and software for analyzing biological systems. For the applicant, these activities occur in clearroom environments that do not involve large or industrial-scale processes or machinery, do not produce any noise or emissions, and are relatively low in intensity from an employee density and trip generation standpoint. The city has permitted 10X Genomics existing operations and locations that have similar zoning to the proposed, and such uses have found to be compatible with adjacent office, residential, and other uses, and have not caused negative impacts or issues. From an economic perspective and alluded to in the previous slide, 10X Genomics is today among the city's largest sales tax generators. Staff was provided an opportunity to review information regarding current sales taxes associated with 10X Genomics existing facilities, and the project would substantially expand 10X's business capacity and with it, allow for a commensurate increase in sales tax revenue for the city. Furthermore, on a per-square-foot basis, 10X Genomics existing sales tax generation is well above that of most typical retail sales tax generators in Pleasanton, and that is by a significant margin. Considering this, staff believes that the proposed land uses are appropriate for the subject site and surrounding area, and the proposed PUD rezoning is appropriate. Topic 3 is the site plan. PUD zoning allows flexibility in the development standards for a project and allows the applicant to propose project-specific development standards, including building setbacks, building height, and FAR, et cetera. The appropriateness of these proposed development standards are analyzed on a case-by-case basis that takes into account site location, opportunities and constraints, proposed uses, conformance with similar development in the area, and any negative impacts to surrounding uses. In this instance, the subject site is vacant, relatively large and flat, and with the exception of residential development to the south and east, is in an area with other large campus-style office, R&amp;D, or commercial development. Because of this, the applicant has elected to place Building 1 on the north end of the site, closer to that similar existing development and away from the residential uses. This location facilitates transit and pedestrian and bicycle connection opportunities to and from the site given the surrounding existing or proposed offsite improvements for these types of activities. Additionally, it allows the applicant to repurpose and utilize the existing surface-level parking lot left over from the retail center for Phase 1 and continue to direct most vehicular trips to and from the site off of Springdale Avenue and again away from the nearby residential uses. While Phases 2 and 3 are conceptual, the applicant is proposing a 32-foot-wide minimum setback line, meaning that future buildings constructed in these phases may be shifted anywhere within that minimum setback line as the applicant continues to refine their master plan. While the applicant is proposing a minimum 32-foot-wide setback for all frontages, Building 1 is proposed to be set back approximately 80 to 90 feet from both Stone Ridge Mall Road frontages, and also includes a generously landscaped area on the edges of the property. Staff believes the setback is acceptable and supportable based on the applicant's shade-and-shadow study, as well as the neighborhood context renderings that I showed the Commission earlier. The closest residential buildings to the east are located approximately 175 feet to 200 feet away from the property line, and those to the south are approximately 175 feet away. And as mentioned minimally, future buildings would also be set back at least 32 feet from all property lines. Like Phase 1, some drop-off and pickup trips would occur off Stone Ridge Mall Road across some residential uses to the east. However, again, most vehicular trips to and from the site would still be directed off Springdale Avenue, reducing the impacts on those residential uses. It is further noted that the applicant provided a shade-and-shadow study as part of the sequel evaluation and per the Commission's request at the work session. That study modeled the conceptual Phase 2 and 3 buildings and concluded that the taller buildings in Phases 2 and 3 would minimally cast a shadow over the westernmost units of the existing residential uses to the east, but only during the winter months and only during the late afternoon from 4:00 PM until dark. This was deemed a less-than-significant impact. Based on the shade-and-shadow study and the renderings provided, it appears that both Building 1 and the future buildings in Phases 2 and 3 would have minimal effect on the surrounding development. Phases 2 and 3 would also be subject to a subsequent design review application to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, which would allow an opportunity to review and the details, would be allowed, an opportunity to review the details, refine the architecture and massing, and make adjustments if needed. Conditions of approvals numbers 7 and 8 specify the required Planning Commission design review, including that the city would have the ability to require a larger setback for all or portions of the Phase 2 and 3 buildings to the extent necessary to maintain visual compatibility with the surrounding area, avoid overly concentrating building height and mass towards the eastern frontage, and to provide for varied building massing and articulation along the project frontages, similar to what is being achieved with Building 1. Staff believes this approach provides the applicant adequate flexibility to design and place buildings within the proposed building envelope as they refine the master plan, but also adequately protects the surrounding development. Topic 4 is traffic and circulation. As I mentioned, vehicular access to the subject site would be provided from three existing driveways. However, the majority of traffic would be continued to be funneled towards Springdale Avenue. As discussed in the Agenda Report, the general plan requires site-specific traffic studies for all major developments, which have the potential to exceed Level of Service or LOSD at major intersections, and requires developers to implement and the mitigation measures identified in these studies to maintain Level of Service D or better. Accordingly, a traffic study was prepared by Fair and Pairs to analyze the traffic and circulation for this project and to assess the project's consistency with the general plan Level of Service intersection operational thresholds. The study measured the effect proposed traffic would have on 16 intersections in the vicinity of the site during the morning, 7 to 9:00 PM, and evening, 4 to 6:00 PM, which are considered the peak periods. Traffic scenario conditions were evaluated under existing near-term and cumulative conditions with and without the proposed project. To estimate the level of traffic that could be generated by the project, trip generation estimates were developed based upon trip generation rates presented by the Institute of Transportation Engineers Generation Manual for general office, research, and development, and industrial uses. Rates based on square footage and employees were reviewed, and the trip generation rates based on expected number of employees yielded the highest trip generation. To reflect the proposed project's proximity to BART, transit trip reduction of 3% was applied to account for trips that could be made to the site primarily by transit. Additionally, the vehicle trips generated by existing uses on the site were eliminated with the proposed project, were factored into the trip generation for the analysis of the proposed project effect on the transportation system and on the roadway network at the time the traffic counts were collected. At build-out, the proposed project is expected to generate approximately 4,520 daily vehicle trips, including 604 morning peak hour and 632 evening peak hour trips. However, as mentioned, not all trips would be new to the roadway system. Accounting for the former commercial retail center on the site at the time that the traffic counts Accounting for the former commercial retail center on the site, the time that the traffic counts were collected, the net increase in vehicular traffic to the roadway system is expected to be three thousand six hundred and eighty daily trips, including five hundred and forty-eight morning peak and four hundred evening peak hour trips. To assess the proposed project's consistency with the general plan policies, level of service and queuing assessments were excuse me, level of service and queuing assessments were undertaken based on the expected trip generation rates. While the proposed project would not degrade any intersection beyond established levels of service or below the standards of service level level of service D, the traffic study and staff are still recommending conditions of approval and mitigation measures requiring the applicant to construct several offsite improvements to ensure that the local roadway network continues to operate at acceptable levels of service prescribed by the general plan. These improvements are listed on pages twenty-two and twenty-three of the agenda report and are broken down to coincide with the project phasing. With these improvements, staff believes the proposed project would have a less than significant impact on the city's existing roadway network and supports the proposed circulation plan. Moving on to topic five, which is parking. For phase one, the applicant is proposing to repurpose and utilize four hundred and eighty-three existing surface level parking spaces on the site. The proposed parking ratio is approximately one space for three hundred and thirteen gross square feet, which is consistent with the nearby Workday project. At build out, if the proposed six level parking structure and the surface parking is constructed, the proposed parking ratio would be approximately one space per three hundred and thirteen square feet, again, consistent with the nearby Workday project and is equivalent to three point three spaces per one thousand square feet. Being a PUD, parking requirements are determined on a case by case basis. The proposed parking ratios for phase one and build out are slightly less than municipal codes office parking requirement of one space per three hundred square feet. However, given the proximity to BART and two bus stops, as well as the various measures the applicant will implement to propose propose, excuse me, promote alternative commutes described in the agenda report, staff believes that many employees will not drive to the site. Therefore, staff can support the small one point four percent reduction in typical municipal code parking requirement for office uses, which is reflective of the sort of flexibility that is the intent of the PUD zoning district. To ensure parking is not an issue, staff is recommending a condition of approval that if operation of the of the proposed use results in conflicts or complaints pertaining to parking and or traffic or circulation issues, the applicant will be required to provide existing parking and employee accounts to the city's traffic engineer for review. If necessary, the city's traffic engineer may require site and or operational modifications to the use to mitigate any impacts. Topic six is architecture and building height. As previously described, building one has significant detailing and articulation, and the form and shape of the building is visually interesting. The materials and colors are attractive and will blend in well with the surrounding developments based on the similar finished schemes found on other existing development in the vicinity. While conceptual, buildings two and three would be architecturally similar and or compatible with building one. As I mentioned earlier, a condition of approval is being recommended, requiring subsequent design review for phases two and three to ensure that compatibility. And overall, staff supports the proposed architecture for building one. Just to briefly touch on building height, as mentioned again, building one and the future proposed buildings two and three would be less or commensurate with with other existing office buildings in Pleasanton. Building one would be less than the maximum height of buildings permitted at Stone Ridge Mall, which is up to sixty-five feet, and buildings two and three are only incrementally taller. For the commission's reference, table three on page twenty-eight of the agenda report lists the height and number of stories of the proposed building one, future proposed buildings two and three, and some of the taller existing surrounding buildings. Based on this analysis, staff believes all building heights would be compatible with the surrounding commercial buildings, and as stated earlier, create less than significant impacts on the surrounding residential uses. Topic seven is landscaping and tree removal. According to the tree report prepared for the project, there are approximately one hundred and fifty-nine existing trees over six inches in diameter on the site, including seventy which are defined as a heritage tree. In phase one, approximately sixty-one of the one hundred and fifty-nine trees, including five heritage trees, would be removed. At build out of all phases, an approximate an additional approximately thirty-four of the remaining ninety-eight existing trees, including one heritage would be removed. The removed trees are primarily in parking lot areas and interior trees. No new trees, except for ones that are currently dead in plant areas of the parking lot would be replaced under phase one. However, at build out, approximately two hundred and forty-nine new trees of varying sizes would be planted on the site. Conditions of approval are recommended to mitigate the offset for tree removal versus the new trees to be planted. In conjunction with the tree planting plan, overall, the landscape plans have been provided for the subject site showing existing and new planted areas around building one and for the remainder of the subject site, including planting of the vacant phase two and three areas subject of the site with native grasses and a wildflower mix of shrubs until the such time that those subsequent phases are moved forward. The landscape plan would provide a variety of trees, shrubs and ground cover on the subject site. The specific planting details would be determined at the time of building permit review and be finalized in consultation with the city's landscape architect to ensure an attractive landscape that will also meet the city's water efficiency landscape ordinance. In phases two and three, more detailed plans will be developed and submitted for the proposed landscaping and hardscape areas around the future buildings and also subject to review and approval by the city. Staff believes that the proposed landscape plan is attractive and contains sufficient landscape area around the perimeter of the structures, parking areas and along the street frontages. Staff also believes once finalized with the city's landscape architect, the density and species of trees indicated would be appropriate. Since the quantities and spacing of the shrub and ground cover is not shown, a recommended condition of approval requires the applicant to provide these details at the building permit review stage and would be again subject to consideration and coordination with the city's landscape architect. Okay, topic eight of the which is the development agreement. Just as a brief overview, state law authorizes cities to enter into binding development agreements for the development of property. A development agreement is a commitment between the city and a property owner or developer to proceed with a specific development in accordance with the terms of that agreement, which describes the land uses and related processes that will apply under that application. In essence, a development agreement locks in the laws in existence at the time of entering into the agreement with the city, and the city agrees not to change its planning or zoning laws applicable to the specific development project for a specified period. Therefore, future land use decisions regarding such a development project would not be based then on current planning and zoning law, but rather would be based on the laws in existence at the time the development agreement was executed. The developer gains certainty through this process and a continuity of regulations in force at the time of entering into the agreement and prior and a prior and prior to the commitment of a substantial investment in project improvements. In exchange, the city gets certain benefits and concessions or amenities that it might not be able to get normally through conditions of approval. Specific to this project, the applicant has proposed a ten year term for the development agreement, and in exchange, the applicant would contribute one million dollars in funding for the reconstruction of fire station number two, which is located across from the project site, and would also return a portion of sales tax to the city for construction materials above and beyond the other sales tax revenues that I mentioned earlier. The applicant is also committed to obtaining lead gold equivalent certification for the project. And all details currently in the development agreement are attached as exhibit E to the agenda report. Procedurally, the development agreement requires the planning commission to provide a recommendation to the city council regarding whether whether the proposed development agreement conforms with the general plan. For the analysis in the agenda report and based on staff's presentation tonight, staff believes the project as designed and with the associated amenities would conform with the general plan. Thus, thus, staff supports the proposed development agreement and recommends the planning commission make a finding the development agreement is in conformance with the general plan. The commission should then forward a positive recommendation to the city council. Okay, stick with me, topic nine, we're home stretch here. So, topic nine is CEQA. And as mentioned in the agenda report, a draft mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for all for the proposed project. The analysis in the initial study concludes that the project related environmental impacts are mitigated with mitigation measures incorporated into the project's design or required by conditions of approval, and there would be no significant or unmitigated environmental impacts. Staff therefore believes the mitigated negative declaration can be issued in conformance with CEQA. If the planning commission concurs with this with this assessment, the planning commission should recommend the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration prior to acting on the project. Okay, so to conclude, in accordance with the analysis presented tonight and in the agenda report, staff finds the site plan to be functional with efficient onsite circulation, adequate provisions for parking and well-designed landscape features. Building one and future proposed structures are positioned to create a positive visual presence on Stone Ridge Mall Road and Springdale Avenue. The design of building one and future proposed structures are attractive, and the architectural styles, colors and materials will complement the surrounding development. Affected street intersections will be mitigated to provide for efficient flow and to maintain acceptable levels of service. And as I just mentioned, all environmental impacts are mitigated to less than significant levels. So therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission take seven actions this evening. The first being that they find that the proposed project would not have a significant effect on the environment. Number two, find that the proposed PUD rezoning and development plan are consistent with the general plan. Number three, find that the proposed development agreement is consistent with the general plan. Four, adopt a resolution recommending adoption of a draft initial study and making a mitigated negative declaration. Five, adopt a resolution making the PUD findings and recommending approval of cases PUD dash one thirty-nine and P twenty dash zero nine seven three, subject to the draft conditions of approval listed in exhibit A two. Item six would be to adopt a resolution recommending a finding that the development agreement is consistent with the general plan. And finally, action seven would be to forward the initial study mitigated negative declaration cases PUD dash one thirty-nine and P twenty dash zero nine seven three and the development agreement to the council for consideration. And just briefly, I'm talking a lot here tonight. I would just like to note that in addition to several key staff members that are in attendance, the city's environmental compliance consultants, Mary Bean, Celia So and Lance Park from First Carbon Solutions are also here to help staff address any environmental questions. And additionally, from the applicant team, Michelle Hodge and Splendoreo, as well as other Tenex representatives have joined us. From terracette, we have Greg Thurman and Beth Hudson. And also in attendance and available to speak and or answer questions are members of the design team, including Brian Jensen from HOK, and I think Steve Calconio is with us from Kiran Wright. And then just one last note, staff would like to acknowledge that we did receive several letters of support for the project that came in subsequent to the agenda packet being distributed to the commission. And those letters of support were forwarded on via email by Stephanie over the last couple of days. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and hopefully answer all your questions.
All right, thank you, Eric. I must say, I did read the thirty-two page staff report ahead of time. And you've covered everything in that thirty-two page staff report with great precision. So, joking aside, no, it's very thorough job by by staff, very clear, I thought, going through things. So, thank you very much for that. So, I I've had the benefit of seeing this a few times. So, we obviously had a workshop session. We had another review and then I think this is our third review if I'm not mistaken. But some of the commissioners are newer. So, so feel free to ask if this is especially if this is your first time seeing this project, to ask any questions that you have of of staff. So, I'm just gonna go by alphabetical order as usual, but feel free to ask if you have any questions of staff. So, Vice Chair Allen, any questions?
Sure, Brown, would you mind if I go last so the newer members can go first?
Okay, yeah, that's that's fine. And a similar thought, but all right, that sounds good. So, let's actually, let's start with Commissioner Morgan, I believe. You were the newest to join us, so why don't you lead us off?
All right, thank you. I have a few questions more about the property than the buildings themselves. But the first question I have is, I'm wondering, I don't know how the manufacturing works and how you make the consumables. I'm interested to know whether there are any chemical emissions. Are there any vents from the manufacturing area or vents from a laboratory, for example, where they're doing testing where some chemicals would be emitted to the atmosphere?
So, my understanding from the information we received from the applicant to date is that it's a it's a no emission use, and I don't know if they will be touching on that in more detail during their presentation. But it probably would be best to let them jump in and answer that question in detail so they can really, I don't want to step on toes and speak out of turn, but to my knowledge, a zero emission use.
Yeah, subsequent to any questions that you might have of staff, I will be turning it over to the applicant for ten minutes to present. And I know the applicant has given commissioners opportunities in the past as well to sort of have one-on-one meetings. And then I know I've asked similar questions, Commissioner Morgan. So, if if the applicant doesn't cover those to your satisfaction in their presentation, then you'll have another opportunity to ask that clarification as well. Any any other questions outside of that, though, specifically related to the staff?
Yeah, I have several questions. I just don't know whether to ask them now or later on.
You're free to ask them now. If there are questions more directed at the applicant, I would hold on those, but anything that staff can answer, I would go ahead and ask it now.
Okay, I'm curious about the landscaping, just given that we have more and more droughts and water issues every year. I noticed that it was characterized as drought tolerant, but when I looked at the tree selection, it looked like there were maple trees and dogwood trees and then fescue grass. And to me, that's medium water usage, not drought tolerant. And I'm just wondering in today's world with the scarcity of water, whether it's possible to consider a more drought tolerant landscape. And I don't know what the other commissioners' views are on this, so I may not be speaking consistently with what other people think here either.
Sure. So, as I mentioned, the the city does have a water efficiency landscape ordinance that the applicant would be required to adhere to. It's not atypical, in my experience, that when you're looking at plant pallets, often the tree species usually tend to be a little bit more water hog than shrubs and grasses and those sorts of things that take up much of the site. And this is a preliminary plant pallet at this point in time. The landscape plan will need to be refined. The the requirement of the applicant up to this point has been to show density of trees to make sure that they would be able to meet their shading requirements for parking and such. But updating the plant pallet and looking at alternative species is not off the table at this point in time. And accordingly, as I mentioned, we do have a condition of approval in there that the final planting details will need to be worked through our landscape architect's office. So, it's definitely something that in conjunction with planning, we can keep on our radar. Additionally, should the commission feel strongly about it, can definitely add a condition of approval if if we need to to go that route, if that provides a higher level of comfort for the commission.
Okay, and I'm curious, I don't know if this is the right time to ask or not, but for the second phase of the project, we have the parking garage, and then you still have some onsite parking, I think sixty or seventy spots on the southern end of the property. What's the purpose of having the onsite parking there rather than having a slightly bigger garage and then more open space? Is there a purpose for the the parking lot? Is it visual? Is it? I'm trying to understand, is it is it out of convenience or why have why have the parking lot at all and not not just plan on everyone parking in a slightly bigger garage with more open space?
Sure. And that's a that's actually a question I'll defer to Brian with HOK when the applicant makes their presentation. I believe he will be going over the evolution, design evolution of the of the site plan and the architecture. And so I think he'll have a better insight on what the thought process was related to that layout.
Okay, and last question, I don't have a point of view here, but I'm curious, is there solar on the roof?
So, the applicant is being required to achieve lead certification gold, which I believe has some solar. which I believe has some solar amenities built into that certification. And again, for all the specifics, I think I will defer to Brian on how much solar. To my knowledge, there will be some incorporated in, or at least the facilities and infrastructure will be installed in the building at the time of construction so that if they needed to add solar or increase the amount of solar, those amenities would already be present.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now. All right, that's good. I think the staff report also mentioned in some cases they would be getting to platinum. So but we'll we'll let the applicant discuss that when they come to it. So thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Nyberg, any questions, both staff?
Yes, I have a number of questions. First of all, I guess, any hopes that Qzar laser tag would be coming back are officially dashed now. I will give that one up. I really enjoyed going there with my kids a long time ago. Progress. So I also read the thirty-two page staff report, very thorough. Commend the people on staff for creating it and putting such detail and attention and focus on it. If you have a couple of questions on it, the there was a mention that the applicant had a recorded agreement with the mall owner that was reopened or renegotiated in the past several months so that the number of required parking spaces decreased. I also listened to the November workshop of the planning commission to get some background. At that time, it was mentioned that the there's possibility of waiting for that agreement to expire in order to take advantage of lesser parking requirements. Is that now irrelevant? Is that off the table with the new numbers that the applicant has negotiated with the mall owner?
Yes, at this point in time, you know, I have not seen the agreement. But what we've been told is that, yeah, they were able to accelerate the process a little bit. The original agreement was not due to sunset until 2028, I believe. But the the mall ownership and ten X were able to get together and agree to accelerate that provision or remove that provision from the agreement altogether to reduce the parking numbers now as opposed to having to wait five years or six years.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. At the workshop, there was some discussion on the potential phasing of amenities and mitigations with regard to the four area ratio discussion. And there's some discussion about placing a dollar amount perhaps on the desired amenities or, if you will, products of value to the city based on priority list. Is the outcome of that consideration, the one million dollar improvement to the fire station across the street? And will there be any phasing or are there any discussion of continued phasing?
And so I'll jump in and then if I misspeak, Ellen, please jump in or Melinda. But the my understanding is that the million dollars will be right off the top. Donation to the city for the fire station. The current form of the DA also includes some provisions and additional amenities that I mentioned about the sales tax back to the city. And then on top of that, just the expansion of the business capacity of ten X by consolidating here and growing the additional sales tax revenues that are that will be coming to the city. Staff believes are sufficient in terms of the amenity portion. The applicant needs to meet that level of burden in order to get the development agreement signed off on. So I'm correct, at the work session, there was a lot of talk with the commission about what the exact dollar amount should be, how they should prioritize it and so on. And so obviously, that'll be something that would be taken up at the council level as to whether or not the million dollars is acceptable or if that number should be higher or lower or if it should be dedicated elsewhere. But the current form of the DA is what you have attached to the agenda report now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I certainly don't want to get into the council's business about negotiating monetary levels like that.
Sorry, if I could just add to Eric's statement, yeah, he captured it correctly. I think one nuance is to note that the million dollar payment would be due when this campus expands to exceed the thirty-five percent threshold. So it would not be realized with phase one because at that point, the project would not be at the thirty-five, above thirty-five percent FAR. But when permits are pulled to expand above that level, then that's when the payment would be would be due. So just a.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Yes, I do remember reading that. All right, the development agreement, of course, I guess, in pretty standard language, gives the developer a vested right to develop the project. But then anytime during the course of the project life, there could be project amendments. There could be, you know, there will be design reviews at different phases. And that type of, you know, this type of normal change is one we would expect as as things go along. The I guess I'm wondering, what is the comparison between the vested rights and then project amendments? What is the the relative stature, if you will, or status or extent as compared one to the other?
It sounds like an excellent question for Larissa, if you want to perhaps respond to Commissioner Nyberg.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. Commissioner Nyberg, the vested rights for both the original proposal, which is what the development agreement covers, as well as for any future amendments, will also be covered in the same manner. So the amendment sections of the development agreement would grant those amendments to the project. So in terms of when they go forward with phase two, and then they have, for example, design changes or the design review process, and that would become part of the same vested rights. So they don't have any different levels of rights. They all fall under the same development agreement. So that would be for 10 years.
Okay, I see. All right. Thank you for explaining that to me. Next page I have marked here. In the traffic analysis, there is a mitigation to construct a traffic signal for signalization of the intersection of Springdale Avenue and the project driveway. I'm assuming that's the project driveway that goes into the garage. Is that during phase two, when that signal would go in at the same time that the garage is built? Am I understanding that correctly?
We're actually going to condition, oh, I'm right in the sunlight. We're going to condition them to either bond for it. It would be, we won't need it in phase one at all. And it's it's questionable whether or not we'll need it in phase two. And so what I would prefer, as opposed to putting in a new traffic signal when a stop sign is perfectly sufficient, is that when we see their volumes reach capacity, if they need a traffic signal, then we'll require them to construct it. So they'll probably just bond for it. So it'll be after phase two if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just, just for your reference, condition of approval number one fourteen A covers the language of constructing the signal or bonding for it. You would like to see the language?
Okay, yeah, I was primarily concerned at what phase that would occur if it was tied to the garage itself. Because I have never thoughts about the garage. I wouldn't call them necessarily concerns, but that would come later on with, you know, design approval for that phase of the project. One concern that I will mention, and I don't think it needs to be addressed here necessarily, was I think maybe the traffic analysis probably already took a look at it, would be queuing up vehicles in line waiting to get into the garage. If, for example, if there was some kind of restraint, like a gates or entrance to the garage, you know, how that would be considered because we certainly wouldn't want traffic spilling up and queued up during rush hours on the neighboring streets. So that's more of a comment. Let's see here. Well, the in the staff report, the exhibits A through D, I believe, are those coming later? Are those not developed yet? I noticed they're blank pages.
They should be in your packet. Hopefully not a production error on our part.
See, this is Exhibit A, it's a blank page, and likewise, Exhibit B. So I was just curious because I wanted to read them. That's all.
They've been available online, but I apologize if I'm missing from your from your hard.
Okay, yeah, I was looking looking at my packet material. Okay, well, I'll go online then and look at them. Let's see, I have just one or two more. That one. There was, in the minutes of the workshop, there was a mention that the applicant wanted to retain spaciousness in their project and thought it could be prudent to add language about the design in the PUD to give flexibility, but to state the rules regarding setbacks. So I guess we've talked about that. That language is, I believe, in the proposed agreement, is it not?
Yeah, so there's, so the proposed setback line of thirty-two feet is shown on the plans and is also included in the conditions of approval. And then there, again, there are conditions of approval related to review of the buildings two and three subsequently through design review that would come back to the planning commission.
Okay, great. Well, that's all the questions I have. Thank you so much for answering them. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Nyberg. Commissioner Gettus?
Thank you, Chair Brown. I just want to reiterate, I did over a couple of days read all thirty-two pages of the staff report. It was very thorough. The materials were very thorough. The questions, I don't have any questions for staff at the current time, so thank you.
All right, very good. Commissioner Pace?
Thanks for the materials and the thorough work as usual. Just a quick follow up to some of the questions that have been covered. What is the the traffic kind of mitigation plan and so forth? We'd have, we have talked previously with the with Simon and Properties about changes they were going to make to to the property that's basically across the street there that's on the front end of the mall. Is the is the traffic work that was done, does that reflect kind of the proposed introduction of buildings and, you know, like the gym and the movie theater, et cetera, that was proposed by Simon? Was that part of the analysis that was done when conducting both the parking and the traffic analysis that we're considering here and the work that was done here?
Eric, I guess you want me to take that one?
That's why I stay muted. Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. So so within our traffic model, we do have expansion of the mall as well as additional residential. So those were included in the in the analysis and the modeling that was completed. The one thing that wasn't really done is because we don't have a final set of where their driveways are going to be or or how they're going to modify their driveway locations on the Simon property. We didn't look to that level of detail for how that circulation would work with the existing driveway. That'd be something that we would have to work with Simon to make sure that they have either enough offset between their driveways or an actual four-legged intersection for where they were, they had proposed driveways that were a little bit offset from from the previous designs. So did that answer your question?
I think so. So just to be clear, thanks. Thanks for the comments. You're thoughtful as usual on this, which I appreciate. That when the finalization of the driveways and so forth comes into, you know, I guess, more realization for both the mall as well as for ten X, then, you know, that's going to, that would come back to you and you would have the ability to approve kind of where those would come in. So we're not, and that wouldn't necessarily need to come back to this group. Is that is that a correct understanding?
Yeah, so so any modification that would be made wouldn't be made to the to the ten X side. It would be made to the Simon side. So if they if they come in with that exact same design, but they want to shift within, you know, fifty feet of the existing driveway, the, you know, the stacking issues would become a concern, you know, just as it left turns to come in from Stoneridge Mall Road. And so we'd want to make some design modifications on the Simon side, and that's how we would approach it.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioner Pace?
Not at this time, thank you.
All right, so going back to you, Commissioner Allen, you have the floor now.
All right, thank you. My fellow commissioners did a great job of asking a lot of good detailed questions. So I just have three fairly simple additional ones. The first two are related to the development agreement. On the one million dollars, given it's being provided later on, I'm assuming that we that one million dollars will be inflation adjusted so that whenever it's provided, it's going to be more than a million if it's provided in five years or a few years, correct?
There's no proposal to include an inflation factor in the.
Okay, well, I would just, we'll get into that later, but I'd ask that to be considered for future future comment. And second, on the development agreement, I'm assuming we will be receiving impact fees, the standard kinds of impact fees we receive for affordable housing and for traffic and things such as that. Is that correct?
That's right. The project is required to pay development impact fees. Some of those fees, however, are offset by credit that associated with the previous retail uses of the site. That's very standard for us to do that as we offer credit of for existing development because fees were already paid for those, that square footage previously. So they can take advantage of that credit, but but in general, yes, they will pay development impact fees as at our current rates as required. And those do inflate into the future.
As a follow up to that, I'm assuming on affordable housing, whatever fees would have been paid in the past would have been quite minimal versus what we're asking for now because our fees have gone up substantially from when those buildings were initiated. So I'm assuming that that difference will be built in.
Both the credits.
Receiving whatever the current rate is, you know, adjusted for the small amount that would have been paid. Is that correct?
Both the credits and the fees are paid at current rates. Moving forward, if fees in future phases, the fees would be adjusted to reflect inflation. And that's the standard methodology that the city uses for all for all projects and fee credits.
Okay, all right, thank you. And my final question is regarding the EPIS cladding material. That's the cladding around the building. My understanding is that we, this is not commonly used in Pleasanton, and we haven't seen it in the planning, any of our planning commission projects, so it's really new to me. So my question is just, is this an industry standard kind of material? And what is the reputation durability of this kind of product for commercial buildings such as this?
So staff can speak to this a little bit. So it is a product that's used widely in all sorts of both commercial and residential applications. It has, I think, a twenty or more year history in the building industry. So although we don't have a lot of examples in Pleasanton, it's certainly used widely throughout the Bay Area and California. It's, you know, it's an engineered material, but generally has a has a good reputation for durability. I actually went on a slight visit to an EPIS building in Emeryville that we were referenced by the applicant as an example that was built in nineteen eighty-nine, I think, and was in good condition. Really didn't give staff any cause for concern about durability of this material. You know, obviously, any any building will suffer wear and tear over time, you know, and will need to be maintained. But this is, we didn't feel there was any particular durability concerns with EPIS for this building.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one final question. That is, we're being asked to approve a detailed design, including colors, for one building on this project out of what will eventually be four buildings when you include the garage. And we're being asked to do that absent seeing what this whole project will really look like in terms of color and that sort of thing. So my question is, do you know when we'll be seeing the big picture? I mean, part of why I'm asking is because there's a lot of gray in the building we're being asked to look at. And to the degree the rest of the project is going to be the similar gray, it it's going to look even more gray and massive. And so how do, how should we think about? how do, how should we think about approving this one section absent having what the big picture will look like in terms of aesthetics?
Well, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I, I think Michelle with ten X has some information on how the phasing is going to play out moving forward, so she might be able to address that question. I don't want to cut you off, but just to, so you're aware.
I'll wait till, I'll wait.
Yeah, I know with Michelle this morning, and she had mentioned that they're already starting to think about the timeline for the next phasing, and so that might help. Commissioner Allen, answer your question.
But I, I think, I think Commissioner Allen's question was more specific to the color palette for the other buildings. But again, the applicant committee.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could probably dive into it a little bit later, maybe in comments and discussion.
Right. I mean, I think I'd make a couple of comments. One is, one is obviously the planning commission is, is part of the review tonight is to look at the aesthetics of building one and to make sure that it, you know, is, is, meets, meets what, what your, your expectation. And then phase, later phases are subject to their own separate design review as, as Eric has outlined. You know, compatible does not mean exactly the same as, and so there is room, I think, for variety between the buildings so that there's not, you know, avoiding monotony would be an important consideration for later phases as well. So I think the commission would have the latitude to make decisions about perhaps different, different color schemes for building designs in phase two, provided that they are complementary to the first building.
Thank you. Chair Brown, that's all my questions.
Okay, great. Yeah, having the opportunity to review this a third time, Mike, and having such a thorough staff report, I don't really have a lot of questions. The only thing that I kind of struck me, and maybe you can bring up the, the picture in your staff report. Or I can look up, sorry, I have the electronic version on my desktop here. Anyway, the conceptual diagram that, that showed the three-dimensional view.
The one you're looking for, Chair Brown?
Let me see, sorry, I was looking at the staff report. Yeah, that one. The the, the, the one building there just looks very chromey. It's, is that an accurate rendition, I guess, that that kind of, it kind of struck me. It was very silvery, and I was kind of wondering how much glare there would be, et cetera. Was it, was that an accurate representation of what's envisioned for that building?
So, gonna defer to HOK to answer that, I believe. Yeah, I mean, right now, again, as Ellen mentioned, building one, we have the details for that. Have the details for the subsequent phasing, so, you know, I think that this is I wouldn't, I don't even know if I want to be sure to call it a best guess, but it's what the campus could look like moving forward. Include some of the same materials, maybe it doesn't, hard to say at this point.
Okay, yeah, I was just I guess that's, I was just trying to pull up the staff report on my computer here in parallel. I guess that's building two is the, so when we get to the applicant's presentation, if we can kind of that, that would be my one question or, or concern. I mean, we've reviewed the articulation and and discussed the detail, the, the mixed patterns on, on the outside and things like that, and I didn't get an opportunity. I know you did make it available. You sent out an email saying that we could go see the materials in person. And however, I didn't really have that concern until I sort of looked at that diagram, that rendition there, so. All right, so.
Chair Brown, if I, Chair Brown, if I could just add there, there, and HOK can certainly address it. There, there are placeholders that, I mean, as those, those two buildings, buildings two and three have not gone through design review with staff. And, and those would be done in future phases. So we have not, we have not reviews, reviewed detailed elevations, plans, anything for buildings two and three.
Yeah, no, I recognize that. It's just the concern I had is that we're reviewing building one tonight and, and, and the overall project. And I know the buildings two and three would come back to planning commission, which is great. It's just, I'm not sure whether building two is, is made of similar material as building one. Building one does look a different look less shiny, but if we can, anyway, that, that's, that's the question and concern, and if wants to address it in their presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Otherwise, we can discuss it after as well. All right, so given I was the last one to go, I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant, and I will open the public hearing, so. So for the ten X team, you've got ten minutes. And then anyone else choosing to speak on the side after will have three minutes.
Okay, quick technology check. Are you all, Chair Brown, are you able to see my screen?
We can, thank you.
All right, well, fantastic. Well, over, over to you, Michelle.
I think it's over to me. Hello, my name's Ben Heinsohn. I'm the chief scientific officer and co-founder of the company. We started here in Pleasanton back in July of two thousand twelve. And I just wanted to do, to do a brief introduction, so. And then I'll hand it over to Brian, who will take, take the next section. So just to recap, we started here in Pleasanton, I myself, I'm a Pleasanton resident for at least ten years. We did start in the garage. It's a classic kind of high-tech story. But it's even better because it's in biotech, and we believe that the city has a priority for expanding life sciences industry sector here, so. Really, our mission is to accelerate our understanding of biology, to advance human health, and to put it bluntly, we want to make sure that less people die of deadly diseases. That's what we're all about, and we've grown rapidly since our humble beginnings. Back in two thousand twelve, we just crossed a thousand employees this month. And really, we chose Pleasanton because the access to talent, the cost of living. It's a great community, having lived here for over ten years. Great for families, and we want to continue to bring more talent, bring more families, add vibrancy to the community. We do support local businesses, obviously, and we wanted to continue our partnership together as, as we continue to grow with the city, and so we all already support places like the Chamber of Commerce, Tri Valley Innovation, and we continue to keep, keep on growing. There's so much to do, and we want to make our impact on the world, and we appreciate the support we've got from the city thus far, and we hope that that can continue. It's been a great partnership, and we're looking forward to growing our company and keeping headquarters here in, in Pleasanton. So with that, I'll hand it over to, to Brian.
Hey, thank you, Ben. Fantastic. And here's, here's, here's that garage Ben was referring to. Just an incredible, incredible moment in time. Well, so, thank you, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, for this opportunity to come back before you. We've seen each other now a couple of times in this setting. Hopefully, the audio works and the technology works. Do speak up or wave your hands if something goes awry. We're gonna stick to our time limit, try to move through the material as fast we can, and look forward to answering questions afterwards as need be, and I'll try to hit on the Commissioners' questions along the way as best I can. This is the setting, you know, as, as staff who, that was an incredible setup, and, you know, Eric, thank you so much for laying the groundwork for this. You really kind of covered the key facts, you know, that, you know, for me, having worked in, with the community of Pleasanton and so many of you for so many years, you know, of course, at sixty-one-ten and Innovation Plaza, you know, the new JPSC, and so many streetscape improvements. You know, I understand how important this entire landscape and, you know, this property is to the city of Pleasanton. It's our first impression when we enter. And right now, the first impression is really the backside of a kind of an aging retail district. It really faced to the west towards Springdale, the backside towards Stone Ridge Mall Road was really where the dumpsters were and backflow preventers and things like that, so it's an honor to be able to transform a property like this from asphalt and things like dumpsters into just an amazing campus for ten X, something we can be proud of at the foot, you know, of our community. What you see here, and I'll try to cover a couple of your questions he asked along the way. On the left is the building one plan as, as staff reviewed, and then on the right is the build-out plan. I'll hit on a couple of the key points. When we last met, we talked a lot about, and your, your feedback was really clear. You know, let's make sure that the building has variety in height. We certainly have delivered on that. Let's see if we can break up the mass so that it's a really diverse, varied experience. As you go around the building, the building's always changing. You can see in plan of building one how it's no longer one building, but it kind of starts to begin to feel like multiple masses organizing themselves around an entrance. Our entrance, you know, really kind of looks both towards the north but also towards the south, and that was another one of the Commissioners' comments with a parking to the south of the building. Let's make sure there's something there as well to receive. Hopefully, big picture, what you see when you squint your eyes and look at these drawings is a lot of green, and that is very intentional. The light green-colored trees are those to remain. We have beautiful trees along Stone Ridge Mall Road. We want to hold onto as many of those as we can. The darker green might be hard to notice. Those are the new trees, and so as you can see, ten X is really committed to actually reforesting and really making an amazing green lush landscape here. Services tucked to the south of building one, really geographically to the absolute center of the campus. It couldn't be more kind of in the middle, and that's really purposeful. You know, when we met with the commission, we talked a lot about loading and service, and so ten X is really committed to, let's, let's, let's make sure that that is as far away from the building edges as, from the site edges as possible. On the right, you know, as the full build-out develops and expansion continues to the south, as staff mentioned, we have a bigger vision for this campus, which includes a lot of substantial open space improvements, place-making, there's a real commitment to really creating a home here for ten X and Pleasanton, and it's just, we're tremendously excited to work on this project. The Commissioners asked a couple of questions, so I'm gonna just kind of go through them really quickly. Commissioner Morgan, you asked about the future parking structure shown on the right. One of the rationale or reasons for why it's, why it slid to the north was to really get the parking garage off of Stone Ridge Road so that we don't perceive it as much, and so hence the surface parking there. We thought that was a real plus. In some ways, we're burying the structured parking in the center of the site. Also, to be closer to the driveway as well, so there's many benefits to having it in that location. It also helps us future-proof for parking as parking needs change. That surface parking lot has some flexibility. Think your other, one of the other questions here was also about the queuing distance. I mean, you may, you may recall, if you're very detailed, our entrances to the parking structure in the build-out plan originally came right off the driveway from Springdale, and there was a concern about queuing, just as Commissioner mentioned. The entrances were now shown here in the plan, moved much further into the site so that any backup at the gate, if there were a gate, would occur on the site and not in, back into Springdale, and we've worked closely with city staff to organize that. I think there was another question about laser tag. I'm not quite sure after, we'll, we'll have to come back to you with our answer on that one. Um, this is the site circulation plan, and it's essentially the two plans that you just saw. Red or orange, maybe, on your screen is pedestrian, green is vehicular. You can see really the commitment to getting vehicles and traffic towards Springdale away from residents that are on all sides. Really simplify it as well for wayfinding. You can see the two parking structure entrances on the right, allowing for onsite queuing. A really clear drop-off to the north for building one for Uber, Lyft, and other kinds of transportation TNCs that are coming forward. And really just minimizing cars and vehicles. Over time, this is a place for pedestrians and for open space and nature, and not the asphalt that you see today. We can go more, maybe more into site circulation later, but that's really the high notes. The other thing, Commissioners, that you challenged us with is come back with the elevations. Staff already really frankly summarized this excellently. So our job was to do exactly what you asked and really think carefully about the landscape between future buildings, ten X and the road, and really ensure that there's this beautiful park-like environment. That's what we're really committed to here. So we're great. It was fantastic that Commissioners challenged us to come back, cut these sections so we can understand not just our relationship to our own street edge and property line, but also to residents nearby. So hopefully, this helps Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, understand how our buildings kind of sit relative to other uses around us. Ten X is very deeply committed, this entire team, city staff, everyone, to making sure that not only is this a long-term home for ten X, but that we fit, that we're compatible and support the surrounding neighborhood, that we're a part of building. And that's really the, I think, the, the key message with the elevations. Now, I know, I'm a planner. I love plans, and I love street sections and like that, but I know that you want to hear about the building. So joining me is Alan Bright. He's a senior designer. He's a partner in San Francisco with over thirty years of experience. You know his work from the Apple campus. He's also worked on the Pleasanton Corporate Commons here in Pleasanton and so many more. He's now gonna walk you through the building design, starting with vision. Over to you, Alan.
Ryan, thank you. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much. I do want to start with kind of the overall vision, which I know a lot of you have already been hearing about it over the last number of months. But the whole building was really conceived in this idea about science. And how could science inform the building as it sits in this park, in this landscape that Brian's been talking about? The idea about the scale of the building, that it changes in size and shape, and that the panels on the building are really informed by views and by exposure to the sun, and these panels shift back and forth, really kind of working for what kind of uses are inside the building, but also making sure that, that we don't bring in too much daylight into the building and we save energy overall, but really take advantage of tight on the bottom and get more and more glazing, you get further and further up to the top where there's more office spaces and more elements that are around it, so. In this elevation you're seeing right now on the screen, there's the two-story mass, that's the lower area, and then the three-story mass. The two-story mass is metal panel, vision glass, and aluminum panels. And then, of course, the main entries, the north and south that Brian talked about. That's all curtain walls, so it's very inviting, and thank you all for actually asking us to, to really bring that to light, to make those important entries. And then on the three-story building, we're looking at metal panels and EPIS on that side. This is a detailed kind of whole part of the building, looking at the three-story and two-story mass, the three-story on the upper section. The idea about these panels shifting back and forth from floor to floor, glass sizes changing, and the EPIS panels are, the EPIS stands for exterior insulated finished material. And so it's very highly insulated. It comes from the factory already manufactured with insulation, and so the building is highly sustainable for this envelope that actually has these ins and outs across it. Brian touched really on the site already about how the buildings sit, it's a back away from the side, different scales of two-story and three-story buildings and hiding that, that service dock, so again, that north and south entry being really important. Key places that enter into this kind of three-cued building, if you will. Go ahead, Brian. And then coming around, we're gonna kind of move around the building. This is the, the north side entry piece, we're coming from the drop-off side. You can see the two-story building and then the three-story mass, again, making that entry really inviting, really transparent. But the other masses are the idea about these shifting panels with these different reveals for shadow and shade. You asked about the different colors. There will be play in the panel colors as far as the pieces above the windows and below the windows, so we're, we're working on refining all that. The overall screen of the, of the building that'll also play with color, so we'll be able to really make that actually kind of be background as if you see the building as it moves around. And then as you move off to the southeast corner, and this is the edge of that south entry, you can see where that communicating stair will be, where people will be moving up and down the building, the main entry that's kind of cut back. Eric talked about the third level entry on through the terrace above. And then again, the rest of the building just being these very simple EPIS panels and metal panels that are combined to get different colors. Kind of think of the colors almost as jewelry, where you change colors between pewters and silvers and, and other elements to get that to do it. It's so it, it doesn't shine quite as much as you saw on that rendering. This is the, the area where there's service that Brian talked about. The service dock is tucked back between the masses. And any elements that are out in the landscape are fully screened with metal panels or louvers that actually get them to be more pavilion-like to sit in the overall landscape campus. I think you've got one more view here, Brian. Yeah, so this is the view for Springdale. We're looking back towards the building where people will be on their car or on the sidewalk, looking back towards that same area where you actually will have the service areas, but the mounds in the landscape around here really shelter and, and put up the berms around there, so they're seeing most of the building, and you really don't see that area where there's service areas. And then the rendering that you were just asking about, this, this actually is shiny that it's going to be, so that was a very good question, and also the, the question about the foldable takes. You can see on the lower two-story building, there are foldable takes. It'll be there. It's about fifteen percent of the roof area, about eight thousand square feet, I believe, and you can see in the future there, there are ideas about foldable takes on the rest of the buildings. But again, those will be things to look at in the future, but the, that rendering you saw earlier is definitely shinier than the actual materials on the building. They're, they play off of each other much differently, and you will not, you will not have the reflection you saw there.
And so we're gonna wrap it up there. Thank you for the extra time. Sorry about the little technical glitch there on my part, but thank you so much, Commissioners. Thank you all for your time, your contributions. Every one of your questions made the project better along the way. I think we'll end there. Thank you.
All right, very good. Do we have any public hearing input or questions?
Currently, we have one, and it's from Steve.
Um, currently we have one and it's from Steve Van Dorn, and I will go ahead and allow him to speak.
Evening. Can you hear me?
We can, Steve. You're a little quiet to, to me. So you might want to get a little closer to the mic or something.
Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners and city staff. My name is Steve Van Dorn. I'm the president and CEO of the Pleasant Chamber of Commerce. We represent over 700 organizations in Pleasant and throughout the Tri-Valley. We believe this is a dream project for any community. We strongly support it. We believe 10x has crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. They have reached out to the community, both businesses and residents, to give them a forum where they could easily ask questions to understand where the project was planning to go. Specifically, they presented to our 2025 forum group and received some great comments and support. They, as we just heard, they have brought in world-class architects and contractors who also have local connections that have designed and will build a world-class headquarters. We believe the development agreement is more than appropriate. And I ask that we, we not forget about the tax revenue and jobs that will be created in our city with this excellent project. Overall, the 10x Genomics development will vastly improve the areas surrounding the Stone Ridge Shopping Mall. We ask that you recommend approval to the city council. Thank you for your time and consideration and all your hard work.
Great, Steve. Thank you. I believe you said there was only the one, but any, any other public comment?
No other request to speak at this time.
Okay. All right. So there being no other speakers, I will close the public hearing aspect of this and move it over to discussion or a motion from any of my colleagues. And I will resume the, the prior order and start with Commissioner Nybert and, and also and see if you had your questions that you had that the applicant was supposed to try to cover answered or not.
Uh, yes, for the most part, there are just one or two other things I wanted to bring up. The, yeah, I also had the chance to go over to 10x Genomics today and talk with Michelle about the materials and take a look at them. And as Nancy described them, I found them exactly as she had described. The EFS is, it turns out it's very light, very almost like the, the density of styrofoam with a coating over it. I had a little bit of concern as to maintenance of that. Michelle did a lot to assuage that concern as to how it could end up looking over time. Especially on the lowest floor where there may be impacts of various kinds with side of the building. What, what, one thing that it reminded me of, I'm, I'm not sure we all had this experience, but I used to work or go to school in places such as warehouses or gymnasiums where the ceiling was nothing more than, you know, fiberglass insulation, like with a vapor barrier. And invariably you look up there and you see pencils stuck in the insulation and rubber bands and paper clips hanging from it. Because, you know, it gets shot up there from time to time. I just, that's kind of the, the mental picture I kind of had when I looked at the material and felt it. That, you know, people could at any time just want to shoot projectiles at it, but I'm not going to let that, you know, negate, you know, anything, any of my thoughts about the project at all. So I wanted to thank Michelle for making herself available for that. I did have just one other question. With regards to the initial study and negative, negative declaration, the if, if anyone, you know, any members of the public have not seen one of these, you should try it sometime, maybe as a cure for insomnia, but they're very, very detailed. All kinds of environmental issues are considered. And in, in this format, there are four categories in which the issues are classified in a handy little tables that appear throughout the report. The lowest is, the lowest classification is no impact. And above that is less than significant impact. Above that is less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated. And then the highest level is potentially significant impact. And almost all of them that I can see in, in going through this and reading it are in the lowest three levels. I just wanted to ask, were there any findings that were classified as potentially significant impact? I don't think there was, but I just wanted to ask the question. I guess that's for staff.
Yeah, we have our environmental consultants here unless off the top of your head, you know, the answer, Eric. Mary Bean from First Carbon Solutions is here and perhaps could address specifics of the impacts with which mitigations are associated.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't believe there were any, but if Mary is willing to jump on to verify that, that would be great.
I mean, I think perhaps the key thing is that there were no significant unavoidable impacts. So although there were some impacts identified, all of them could be, were determined to be able to be mitigated to a lesser significant level. Probably the key takeaway for this environmental document.
Yeah, yeah, I would expect that if anything might have been identified in the highest level was potentially significant impact, that it could be mitigated. Otherwise, we probably would have come this far. So. All right, that, that's all I had. So thank you, Chairman Brown.
All right. I think I inverted your order, but we'll go to Commissioner Morgan next.
Have we received all of the public comments? Are there any other groups that haven't commented yet? We were waiting for comments.
I read a couple of letters that were provided over, over email.
Yes.
Was there any other feedback staff aside from those two, two letters?
To my knowledge, I think there were a total of five combination of emails and or letters from either members of the public or various organizations. But everything that staff received in time to get to you before the hearing tonight has been forwarded to the commission.
Are there any other public outreach or do we have all of the public comments at this point for this project?
So you have all of the public comments at this point, just to touch a little bit on outreach. 10x did public outreach probably a month and a half ago, maybe give or take, where they met with the residents in and around the project site, property owners, business owners and such. Answered questions in kind of a town hall type setting, I believe, virtual hall setting, I should say. And so that was that portion of outreach. And then through the environmental review process, we send out notification that the city is considering this project and that we are currently conducting an environmental review. If you have comments, we'd like to see the documentation, you can do so. For that process, I think we received a total of two comments, and that is in your agenda report, our response to those.
Okay.
And then just lastly is then the typical notification of public hearing and Mr. Van Dorn was the only public comment.
Okay. Okay. And I'm sorry if I missed it, but I still wasn't sure about whether there are any emissions from the manufacturing and the, and the products that are be made either from vents or from laboratory vents or anything else where chemicals might be emitted into the air.
Chair Brown, would you find it appropriate to let 10x address the question?
Yeah, I, I, given that we have limited public, but tonight, I think it's important that we get all the commissioners' questions answered as, as correctly as possible. So, yeah, 10x, if you want to go ahead and address Commissioner Morgan's question regarding the venting.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is Brian from HOK. I'll jump in. To answer Commissioner, your question, there are no significant emissions from the building. They comply with normal commercial uses. And that's really standard throughout the project.
Okay. So no vents from like laboratories or manufacturing areas inside to the outside of the building, man?
Um, eventing for ventilation purposes for, you know, life safety, absolutely. You know, there is an HVAC system as, as you would expect, but not venting of emissions.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Morgan, maybe I can just add to that. I'm a chemist myself. And so the quantities that we use to build our products are all fairly small in quantity. And the chemicals that we use are, there are some specialized ones, but everything's fairly small scale. It's all disposed of appropriately. The activities that we perform currently over in our coal center parkway are very similar to the ones that we plan on doing here in the, in the Springdale site. And again, a lot of the things that we use are things like simple buffers and salts and, and other things. So there is no significant emissions that we expect coming from the manufacturing of our products and any, any.
No volatile organic compounds or anything?
We do use some organic solvents, but again, the quantities are very small. So we do have fume hoods and things in our laboratories mainly to, you know, protect our workers, for example, but the quantities again are, are very small. It's just very small scales, highly specialized manufacturing of certain chemicals that we use to make our products. And the products that we end up shipping out to our customers, there's nothing of any significant hazard that are shipped to our customers, for example. And our products are made using similar kinds of things.
Yeah. And Commissioner Morgan, I believe you asked me previously if we needed, if we have an air permit and that is not required. So that's what we're talking about. That's not, we don't, we don't have those kinds of emissions. Okay. So no, no permits required from any agency for the air emissions, correct? Correct. Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Commissioner Pace?
Thanks, Chair. Appreciate it. You know, commend the applicant for the work that was done to be responsive to the feedback they've previously received from this body. It also looks like there's been extensive outreach to the neighbors and the community. And I note in the record that it appears that the neighbors surrounding both the, the apartments that are nearby, in addition to the, to the mall. Management owner, Simon Properties, all seem to be in support of, of the, you know, the work that has been done here, what's been proposed. It's clearly very thoughtful way to benefit our community architecturally, in addition to that the economic benefit through the, the increased number of jobs and so forth. I, the, it, it appears that the, the record kind of reflects the extensive kind of outreach to, to the community and kind of the incorporation there. I, I had previously asked questions about setbacks in terms of what type of privacy there would be in place for the, for the apartments that were across the street. But it appears based on the fact to the property line, in addition to the, to the, to the substantial number of trees that are there, will be there as the, as the development occurs that the privacy concerns that I had previously have been, have been addressed. We've already covered in this meeting the, the, the traffic flow and the, and the, and the parking concerns, in addition to the, in addition to the other environmental concerns. So I don't have further questions at this time. Thank you.
All right. Very good. And, and just to be clear, Eric, I don't believe the, the staff recommendation doesn't include any questions or clarification or anything. It's specifically looking for the commission to weigh in on at this time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Very good. And Commissioner Gatos, any questions or items for the rest of the commissions?
Thank you, Chair Brown. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight, Mr. Henson, Ms. Hodges, who gave me some of her time earlier this week to address concerns I had. I brought up some things in, in speaking with her about the project that were probably perhaps for a previous time that, that I think that the time to consider that possibility has, has lapsed. I'll, I'll bring that up in later meetings if projects of, of this kind of size come through. But I, I just want to say I, having grown up in the city, having honestly used that parking lot to play street hockey when I was a kid. My father lives within a thousand feet of there. I grew up partly within a thousand feet. I've, I've talked to him and members of their homeowners association for the townhomes that are adjacent across Stone Dale or Stone Ridge Avenue or Stone Ridge Drive. I'm sorry. But honestly, I think this is a great project. I think what it brings to the city and, and the fire station and its proximity to, you know, an off ramp off of 680 and public transportation and what your company is all about and what they do. I don't see any. I think the proposed development agreement conforms nicely with the plan for the city. I support the development agreement and the rezoning. And I'm prepared to make a positive recommendation to the city council, sort of along the lights that we discussed. Obviously, we, I came into this after the first couple of meetings with the planning commission, but I think there were a lot of good comments passed on early that have been addressed and I look forward to the project. So thank everybody again.
All right. Very good. Vice Chair Alan?
Yes, thank you. I want to commend the applicant for such a thoughtful and thorough proposal and also a role model job of outreach to neighbors and the planning commission. I appreciated the time Michelle Hodges spent with all of us reviewing materials and having one-off meetings on design. And I'm very supportive of the project overall. I do have one concern I want to share and I want to acknowledge that it's subjective. It's around aesthetics and it's subjective. So I want to put it out there. I did discuss this with Ellen and also with Michelle Hodges earlier today. And this is not an area, as, as most of you know, that was discussed at the workshop. At the workshop, we did not have any renderings of the building material, the colors. We just had, you know, basically the blobs of the building. So this is the first time as a planning commission, we've had a chance to look at this area. So in summary, I find the building to be somewhat bland. And a lot of that, I think, is because it's just pretty much gray. And I especially worry about what the end state could be when there's just a lot more gray buildings, four of them over time, including a parking garage. But just looking at this one, because that's all we can look at today, I do find it somewhat bland, with the exception of the entrance areas where there's beautiful glass. And that area, those areas are really well, well done. And I find the design to be somewhat almost too symmetrical and in terms of just a lot of rectangles all along that look the same. So I had three suggestions that I'm hoping would be cost-effective to do and would not hold up the project at all. And I wanted to just share what I discussed with Michelle. Number one is to look at the color palette and see if there's anything else that can be done to perhaps add a little more contrast or interest to the, the, the parts of the building that are pretty much just the more monotonous or if you want to use that term, parts of the building. And have a less of an industrial feel. Number two is on the roof screening. The, the screening area on the roof stands out quite a bit to me when I look at those photos. And I don't, I'm specifically thinking about page G4 data, point oh six, which is three dimensional. I don't know if someone wants to pull that up or pull it up on your own screen, but the, this kind of business has a lot of electrical and more than the average business does. And that's just the way it is. But for some reason, the screening just stands out a lot. And I don't know if it's because of the corrugated metal and the way there's vertical lines going down it, but it just pops so much. And I would just ask that we look at potentially alternative materials, maybe more of a flat matte finish to whatever's on a screening so that it just doesn't pop so much. I don't know if there's any way to move it back some, but I know it takes up a lot of. I don't know if there's any way to move it back some, but I know it takes up a lot of space, so probably not. And then finally, in terms of uniformity, again, I think it's almost, the building's almost too uniform. So in terms of breaking that up a little bit, I'm wondering if we might be able to create some kind of differentiated treatment around some of the corners of the building and/or also perhaps the lower base of the buildings. Oftentimes in buildings, that treatment would be some nice stonework, stones or masonry sort of work. And I'm not, I'm not a designer. I'm not here to design from the dais, but I would sure appreciate if that can at least be explored. And I'm not looking for, so that's, that's my ask, is to explore those three areas and ideally bring that back to staff and have a discussion with staff, ideally before it would even go to the council, because the council may have the same sorts of questions. And at least you're prepared to say you looked at that and maybe have an idea or two that that you could bounce by them or perhaps integrate into a final proposal. Again, I realize that this is subjective and it's all in the eye of the beholder, but this is my eye and I'm on the planning commission to share that. And my final ask, and this is small, but I think it's important as a standard, is since we are not receiving the $1 million amenity for several years, I would ask that there be an inflation increase to that. So that the million dollars in five years is comparable to what it would be worth today as an amenity. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Okay, for my notes, Commissioner Allen, what there were three things you wanted them to look at. I'm just trying to
Want me to go through those again?
Yeah, just list, list off the three.
Absolutely. Point one is the color palette.
Yeah.
Point two is the roof screening.
Yeah.
Making it more subtle. And point three is, is reducing the amount of uniformity by creating some differential treatment around the corners and the base. That could potentially be like stonework or something that creates something different. For interest in the building.
All right. And then the fourth would be the
The fourth item, which is unrelated to aesthetics, is the inflation adjustment for the 1 million.
Okay.
Personally, I think the 1 million is too low, but I always think that the amenity is too low. You all know that. And I don't have any better answer of what it should be, so I will leave it to the council to decide what's appropriate.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm going to go back to those four in a second, but any other comments? Commissioner Allen?
No more comments for me. Thank you.
All right.
Just, just a great job, great job by staff and the applicant in bringing forward this project. And I think it's, will be very exciting for Pleasanton.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to cover my comments and I need to come back to Commissioner Allen's. So first of all, to Ben and Michelle, I would echo the comments everyone else has made. We love 10x genomics in the city and everything you bring and the future potential of additional tax revenues, employment, and just quality of character in the city. So thank you very much for that and, and the work that you've done to address all the commissioners' questions to bring it to this point. I did kind of want to touch on your points. So just from a process perspective, I'm now shifting from questions, comments, clarifications to just facilitating a general discussion on on some of the things that I don't think were necessarily settled in, in comments. Or at least give the other commissioners an opportunity to weigh in and see if they concur with any of them. So I noted the, your four comments, and I'd also noticed Commissioner Nybert, you said you had an opportunity to see the material in person. I was not able to do that. He made some references to, to your ceiling in the gym, but I guess what I'm particularly concerned about having not seen the material myself is is there an inherent concern regarding how, how the material will stand out to dense things, other things? Like typically, I don't worry about the exterior surface of a building. Often it's concrete, brick or something else at the lower levels. Is that a legitimate concern, joking aside, regarding the gym and
Well, if it were me, I'd be concerned about, you know, ongoing costs of maintenance of the, the surface. And I don't know whether that is an actual concern that owners of buildings with such surfaces have or not. It was just a thought that occurred to me is how easily projectile could ding or nick the surface. But just as easily as a projectile could ding it, it can be as easily patched up and painted over. So and that's a point that Ms. Hodges made when I talked with her. So if, if, if the applicant is fine with it, yeah, I'm fine with it too. Far be it from me to suggest a more costly alternative that perhaps isn't needed in the overall scheme of things.
All right, Commissioner Allen, it sounded like you looked to the material as well. Do you?
I concur with Commissioner Nybert. I'd had concerns as well, and staff has done a lot more research over the last 48 hours that has satisfied me that this is a sufficient product. And it's up to the applicant, and that, like, like Commissioner Nybert said, if it's good enough for the applicant, it's good enough for us. I do, I don't know that that material can be painted and I'm not quite sure how it gets patched, but I, again, I will leave that to the applicant because I trust that they've done their research. And we can only expect the building to be maintained properly.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, as my role as Chair, I just want to make sure
Thank you for double checking, because
So, all right.
There's been a lot of conversations on that.
Okay. In terms of the, the color palette discussion, I mean, I, I obviously mentioned the sheen and concerns around that. I know the applicant addressed my concerns as, as part of the, part of the discussion. And I don't know if you're kind of pushing for kind of like a MacBook. I'm talking on my MacBook here. I've got a work MacBook with a different shade of of grays. Are you, are you pushing? Are you, not pushing, but are you innotating that we need different colors, different shades, some, like what are you?
I'm, well, I wish I had the answer. If I did, it would be very, very easy. I would like, I would, but here's a couple ideas that I would like to at least be explored. One is perhaps adding some more white or cream color somewhere that, that just creates some contrast. And I'm not looking at being uniform on every single corner consistently, but maybe on the corners, maybe on the base. Just something that's a little more, more than just a gray, these gray boxes, because this material is like a box, big box. The second thing to try would be stone, there's great tile and stone, masonry stone that has both gray, but it has white in it and both a different texture and some contrasting. It's not real color, but it's at least more white and variation. And if that was put on the corners or perhaps the base of the building, it would add more, I believe, interest and quality to what otherwise looks like pretty much just gray boxes for most of the area.
Okay.
Chair, hey Chair.
Yep.
Just on the, on the stone piece, like I know stone's in vogue now, but stone's not always in vogue. So I would worry on the stone suggestion. I respect that, that, you know, Vice Chair Allen's suggestion, but stone, I think is going to look aged in, you know, when the next design change happens. So that's, that's my comment on that, on kind of the specific materials she's suggesting there.
Do you, Commissioner Pace, if I could add, do you, do you, do you think that, do you agree that there, there is an opportunity to do some more with this, even though stone may not be the answer or, or not?
No, I don't, I mean, if, if the applicant wants to kind of enhance the color palette a bit, one way or the other, but I'm certainly not interested in seeing some kind of bright color scheme or some kind of, you know, I like the muted tone of the way that it looks. We've, we've dealt in many other instances with trying to get our applicants to reduce the visibility of the color schemes over time. And so, so I'm, I'm in favor of neutral and so I like this. You know, I hear your suggestion about white, which is something I suppose, you know, is also quite muted, but I'm, I'm, you know, I'm quite worried about a, a building we're going to ask people to build that's going to supposed to last for a long time. And we've got outdated, you know, design elements in it. That's, that's my, and, and I don't want something that's super prominent in terms of color or, you know, or other kind of features that, that age poorly over time from a design perspective.
Thank, thank you. And just to be clear, I don't want any color. I'm not talking any color. White would be the, the only thing and it wouldn't, and I don't want it to be prominent either. I'm, so let me be clear that I'm looking for muted tones, just something that feels a little more than all gray.
Chair Brown, I have one other question about that.
Sure.
Are there some differences in texture in the building that we may not be able to see just by looking at the the pictures? I mean, maybe it's not quite as uniform as, as I think. I don't know.
Staff or even the applicant, if you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was actually gonna ask if Brian could comment, just talking about the different materials from the metal frame, the metal panel, the IFIS, the glass, and obviously they have different reflectivity depending on the light. If you don't mind commenting.
Absolutely, Melinda. Would it be helpful if I shared my screen or do you have an image in your mind?
No, that's fine. If it helps, Brian, go, go ahead.
I'll be brief. Let me make this large again. Can, let me know when commissioners can see. All right, great. So I'll, I'll, I'll get started and then I know Alan will have some comments as well. We, we agree, we do not want a homogenous building. Ben and Michelle have been clear about this from the beginning. You know, we want depth, we want some variety, but I think to Commissioner Pace and others, we also want to make sure that this building ages well. And so I understand where Commissioner Pace, Commissioner Allen are going in terms of, you know, we want it to really fit here in Pleasanton. And so this is the building, really just, the landscape is denuded. And these drawings are very synthetic. No one can actually see this. This is like if your eyes were like a horse, right? You could see 180 degrees, but they're helpful for architects to use. You can see the different panel sizes. When panel sizes create little shadows and reveals, you see these lines. That's really what we, the human eye really catches is the difference between light and dark. So there's a, there's a depth to the facade that is really important and I'm glad the commissioner asked. The other thing, the massing, so that's where the building kind of moves in and out. I appreciate Commissioner Allen, you're absolutely right. There was a time when I showed you, I think, a big blob. The buildings evolve quite a bit. I think what we find that really matters with architectural massing is how the building walls move in and out. And so you can see what could have been a rectangle or two. It's really become a pinwheel where the building's moving closer and further from the street. And that really is what makes the eye dynamic. Your perspective changes and the building height is also different. There's two and three levels. All of that together creates a really varied experience. I guess the last point, then I'll hand it over to Alan really quickly. We really focused on where do, where do people, you know, where do the citizens really come close to the building? It really happens at the entrances. So we've made sure that there's a high degree of craft, a curtain wall that you actually interact with and touch and get close to. That really matters. Other places, really, you know, what you experience mostly is landscape. There's going to be a lot of diverse plantings between you and this facade. And I, I think that the commissioner's comments about, you know, could there be stones? I think so, but maybe in the landscape, you know, that there could be different textures, different plantings that give us the variability. So as you move around the building, the plants to the east are a little different than the plants to the west. So I think we're picking up some cues about how we want to make sure that there's a varied experience. But hopefully what you're seeing on the screen are buildings of different heights going in and out, further, further from the street, we're pushing in, a lot of variety. And then there's the wall system itself. Alan, do you want to quickly add any?
Brian, thank you. Commissioners, thank you. Brian, maybe go back to the first image you had up on the screen, if you can get back to that. It's, which is the very flat kind of elevation. Perfect. To your questions about, just as Brian's described, there, these planes do go in and out on each of the panels. So you'll get the panels that are above the windows actually are slightly different color than the panels that are vertical but are either side. So they, they do actually have a different play. These renderings really don't show that at all. And then the glazing is going to be a different color than you're actually seeing here. So you'll get this really beautiful glazed center entry that invite people into the building from the north and the south. And then these other panels actually have the glazing with a special color of the metal panels above them. And then the IFIS then has a slightly different color. And then the horizontal bands have a color that also are complementary to the rest of the colors, but, but there's nothing that's a color that's so bright that, you know, in two years you're going to go, why did we do that? It really blends and works for a long-term timeless building. But there will be differences in these planes and these colors that play off of each other. That's why I mentioned kind of jewelry earlier, where you see beautiful jewelry that's layered with pieces and shades and shadows and colors, but they actually all blend and work together. That's the intent behind this.
Yeah, the, the other thing, I'll actually keep this presentation out for a second just for the benefit of the other commissioners, I was going to point out. Can you show the topographical from the top?
Yes, absolutely. Here you go.
Yeah, and what I noted on there, and I don't know if this is enough to address Commissioner Allen's, but I noted that to the right of where it says three levels, that is actually notched out. It actually is not a 90-degree corner. That's actually notched out. And then between, to the left of where it says two levels, you can see from the shadow that is dropping there, that there's, there's sort of notches on those corners as well. And I was just pointing, pointing that out. And then also the bands themselves, as well as the roof band, sticks out from, from the wall. And so there's some subtle, but there is some articulation in the, in the vertical dimension as well as, as you mentioned with the, the panels of different size and slightly different coloring. But anyway. Any other comments from any of the commissioners that want to weigh in on Commissioner Allen's comments regarding the uniformity and color palettes? And are you okay with the design as is? Or is anyone else supportive of asking the applicant to work with staff to address Commissioner Allen's concerns? Or are you okay with the design as is? I think would be the question. I can call on people or you can just speak up.
You know, I'll say, Chair Brown, when I looked at the, the large colorful, and I get all my materials in paper because I can only stare at a screen for so long. You know, it didn't jump off the page. I understand Commissioner Allen's concerns about it being kind of, you know, bland and monochromatic, but you know, I don't, I guess I don't pretend to know or more than the folks who put out the design. I did appreciate the change in the differing sizes of the windows between the IFIS panels. I think that breaks up or makes it a little easier on the eyes and, and makes it look flex like you'd see a building from the 70s. Courthouse in Hayward comes to the mind where every window is the same exact size and it looks like a bomb shelter. You know, but, but I do appreciate the, the the, the eye catching of the entrances where people are going to congregate and come in and out. And the way the panels are situated with respect to differing sized windows, to me, was very attractive. It's hard, obviously a picture is going to be different than what it looks in real life, but generally I'm supportive of it. I understand, you know, the concern about a huge set of buildings in a very prominent part of town and what it could look like ultimately, but I, I don't, I don't know that I can suggest anything more, though I appreciate the concern from, from Commissioner Allen. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. I have one other thought, Chair Brown.
Yeah, go ahead.
When I think about it from just a Phase 1 perspective, and I'm specifically focusing on the entrance on the northern side, I like the looks of that building where I have more trouble is when I think about Phase 2. I have more trouble is when I think about phase two and how all three buildings fit together. At that point, it seems like a lot of gray. And then to me, the two buildings in the back look more boxy to me than the ones in the front. Yeah, it's got a good face, but then people driving on around the other side is much, not notice that. So if I just think about phase one, I like it. And I don't know if there might be a few other changes before we got to phase two.
Okay.
And Chair Brown, I'd like to make your comment too.
Sure.
Well, uh, I'm, I'm in agreement with Chair, Vice Chair Allen, that, um, you know, there are aesthetics, you know, different improvements in aesthetics that can always be made. So I see nothing wrong with encouraging, you know, some type of improvement in aesthetics, be they touches around the edges or uh, you know, whatever they might be, um, you know, just to always continually improve and, you know, make it just a little bit better. I mean, nothing, I, I'm not saying it's not good or not pleasing right now, but if, you know, the applicant wants to add a few more touches and, and, um, make it just that more attractive, then by all means, I think that should be done.
Okay. Um, all right. Um, I think we've discussed color palette and uniformity. Any commissioners want to, um, weigh in on, uh, Commissioner Allen's comments regarding the roof, roof screening and kind of the vertical uh, corrugation. Um, are you guys okay with that as part of the, the design? Or, or maybe I bet it'd be faster to say, is anyone else in concurrence that they would like to see a, a design change on, on the roof screening as part of the recommendation to city council? Okay. Um, all right, uh, not hearing, uh, any other concerns on the roof screening. Um, then the last thing I kind of wanted to address is, um, uh, as part of the recommendation, are others uh, wanting to see an adjustment to the, uh, uh, $1 million dollar, um, uh, figure for, towards the, the fire station, which by the way, I, I do believe is a, a very nice, uh, uh, amenity to, to the city for, for the change that's happening here. So, um, is there, anyone have any comments, questions, discussion they want to have regarding uh, whether we want to or, or not include, uh, a, a recommendation around, uh, that? And, and that might, if we do, that might require, um, uh, staff and the applicant to have a discussion. It may affect, uh, uh, whether or not, uh, we can push the project through at this time. So any thoughts on that?
Chair Brown, I have a thought.
Yep.
You know, the, um, my thought is that I don't have the expertise to, you know, venture a guess on such a number. Um, you know, I've not been in the situation where I had to study, uh, those types of amenities and, uh, you know, I would rely on someone who's, um, negotiated or determined those kinds of numbers many times in the past. Um, and kind of has a, a feel or an, an understanding for how various amenities compare to each other for different types of projects, different valuations, things like that. So, um, to me, a million sounds generous. Whether it's the quote unquote right amount, uh, I, I can't say, but, uh, I would rely on experts for, for that. And, so I, I would just, uh, trust what our staff has done so far. And I, if I wanted to find out more, I'd, uh, you know, I'd probably talk to them.
Okay. And just for clarification, staff, uh, the 1 million is triggered by, um, uh, what, what is the trigger, um, for, for the 1 million?
Um, the payment is triggered, um, at the time that the project would exceed 35% FAR. So, I, I never called it what exactly that number is, but there's a, there's a threshold above which that payment will be made. So, you know, to, perhaps to, uh, Chair Allen's or Vice Chair Allen's suggestion, I mean, there, there is a certain amount of uncertainty for everybody in terms of the timing, um, of that later phase and when that trigger might occur. And obviously the, um, you know, the applicant is looking, the, the, one of the purposes of the development agreement is to provide certainty to the developer about the sorts of, um, you know, amenities that they're being asked to provide and investing the, the project. So the two things and that certainty in the DA go together. Um, so I just wanted to just, just make that note that there's not a fixed timing at this point for that payment. Um, and it could be nine years in the future. It could be two years in the future. And obviously that would, that, an escalation factor would affect that number significantly potentially.
Let me phrase it another way. Uh, traditionally in the past, have we, uh, as part of, uh, PUD, um, recommendations, have we, um, had a inflation adjusted amount for something that triggers in the future or no?
Um, I'm not aware of any, um, for which a cash contribution has been asked, that there has been an inflation factor attached to it.
Okay. All right. Understood. All right. Um, so Commissioner Allen, are, do you feel like we've discussed the, the, the items you brought up?
I do. I feel like we've discussed them and I appreciate everyone vetting them and appreciate feedback.
All right. Very good. Um, so, um, given that we've, um, had a, had a discussion on this item and obviously everyone's had a chance to, uh, weigh in. Um, does anyone, uh, do any of my fellow colleagues, uh, want to consider a motion at this time? And, and you can or, or cannot take into account some of the things that, uh, uh, Commissioner Allen, uh, brought up if, as part of the motion. It's up to you guys.
Hey, hey Chair, it might be useful just to kind of see all the language there. There, there were a lot of pieces that the, um, staff asked us to consider. So I, I think it's probably useful just to see that as we're thinking about the motion. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's great. Great idea. Yeah. All right. So, um, uh, find the proposed project not have a significant effect on the environment. Um, uh, find it's consistent with the general plan, uh, both the rezoning and the development agreement. Uh, recommend the adoption of the, um, of the draft, um, approval of cases PUD 139 and P20 1973. Um, are there any questions anyone has regarding the draft conditions of approval? I know we verbally talked about them, but, uh, if, if anyone needs to have that reviewed before. Um, and then item six is the, uh, development agreement consistent with the general plan and, uh, and then forwarding, um, everything on to the city council for, for consideration. So I would recommend if making a motion, we maybe start with this list of seven, uh, with any, because it would be a, a, a large mouthful, um, and any modifications to any of these, um, recommendations.
Hey, um, uh, Chair, can I just ask one point of clarification?
Sure.
To, maybe to, to Vice Chair Allen. What I'm struggling with Vice Chair is I don't know how to, I, I'm reluctant to insert color. A color discussion here because I'm worried about color heading a direction that I think neither you nor I intend. So I, I'm not sure how to make a motion um, wi- with kind of the thing that we had talked about that doesn't have um, an unintended consequence. So I'm struggling there.
Could I, could I offer one suggestion?
Go ahead.
Um, and maybe, maybe staff can build other suggestions and that would be for one alternative just to be developed and presented to the council. So that they have the base plan, which is the one we have today. If we approve it and we would essentially be saying that we would request the developer develop one alternative that would be presented in the package for consideration. And that therefore doesn't provide any, we're not on the hook for any changes. And it could only be something that would be perceived as being superior to what exists today.
Uh, Commissioner Pace, what do you think of that, that suggestion?
I, um, I'm trying to figure out how I would word that in a way that would make sense to me. So, something about potentially having, uh, an alternative color palette that could be proposed as, as potential consideration for the, for the commission, uh, excuse me, for the council. That might be, that, that, that feels like a way around, a, a way to kind of navigate this. And so we're not stuck with unintended consequences. It gives, it gives the council the final say, but it, it's also limited, limiting the work that would potentially be required. But I think it's responsive to the requests that we consider. You know, we've heard from a couple of the members now that we should, we should consider potential different colors. Um, what, how does that land?
It works for me.
Yeah, if I can suggest, I don't know. This is within my remit as the chair. I, I would, would phrase it in, in, in that, uh, you're proving the project, et cetera, et cetera, uh, with a recommendation that the applicant work with staff at the time of presentation to, to council, um, of any, um, slight design alternatives to address, uh, some commissioners' concerns regarding the, uh, the, the, the color, um, palette. And I, I would, that, that would be one way to address it. Uh, but recognize that whatever we vote on, if we vote as a majority in favor of any motion, it needs to represent a majority opinion, right? Um, so, yeah, that's why we have motions and seconds and then we have a vote, right? So.
So maybe, maybe Chair, can I try a motion? Let's just see where we can, where we can go.
Yeah.
My sense is, um, I'm, I'm, I, I'm trying to frame something I think that we, you know, we've got broad agreement on. So I think my motion would be, um, the planning commission, um, approve or kind of make the findings as, uh, reflected on, you know, on this, on this page, um, that it does not have, you know, kind of walking one through seven as recommended. So should I read all those or can we just kind of have a motion that would adopt those? What, what do you, what's the right way to go there? Uh,
Um, yeah, I mean, you could either.
All right. For the sake of clarity, maybe I'll just say it. May, maybe for the sake of clarity, I'll say it. Okay. All right. So I move that the planning commission, um, uh, find that the proposed project does not have a significant effect on the environment. Number two, the proposed PUD rezoning and development plan are consistent with the general plan. Three, the proposed development agreement is consistent with the general plan. Four, the planning commission adopt a resolution, meaning adoption of the draft IS slash MND. Five, adopt a resolution, the planning commission adopt a resolution, making the PUD findings and recommending approval of cases. PUD dash 139 and P20 dash 0973, subject to the draft conditions of approval listed in exhibit A2. Uh, six, adopt a resolution recommending the finding of a development, development agreement that is consistent with the general plan. And seven, forward the IS slash MD cases, PUD dash 139 and P20 dash 0973 and the development agreement to the city council for consideration.
And anything else?
Um, I'm trying to remember how you crafted that, Chair. Um, uh, I, I'm, uh, they, uh, and I guess eight would be, um, the applicant consider work with staff to come up with a, put, with one potential alternative color palette that could be considered by the council.
Okay. I think that, uh, I think that's clear enough. Um, does, uh, do I, does anyone second that motion at this point?
I would second that.
Okay. All right. Uh, given that we have a motion and a second, um, I'm going to call for a vote. And, uh, since we're in a virtual session, uh, I will, um, just call, uh, call on each person individually. So Vice Chair Allen?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Gatos?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Niber?
Aye.
Commissioner Pace?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Um, and so that would be, uh, five zero on, on, on that motion. So, uh, with, with no opposed. Um, so, uh, since, uh, the, the motion is passed, um, we will uh, close agenda item three. Uh, but before I do that, I just, I wanted to reiterate, uh, the point I made earlier, which is that, uh, the, uh, commissioners and myself are very excited about this project. We're very excited to uh, continue the ongoing partnership with, uh, Ten X Genomics and the, uh, much greatly improved, uh, use of the site and, uh, wish you the best of luck, uh, uh, with the city council presentation. So thank you very much for all your hard work and, and time with the planning commission.
Chair Brown, I'd just like to reiterate that, uh, I didn't get to, uh, make, uh, that known during the meeting, but, uh, this is very exciting and, uh, as a neighbor to this development, uh, living just a, you know, half mile away, I'm really looking forward to it and, uh, taking a walk in that beautiful campus whenever it's, uh, whenever it's, uh, emerges and, um, is, um, is the benefit to all the neighbors and that, uh, Ten X will be a, a good neighbor for a long time to come. So thank you.
All right. And also appreciate all the work that your company was, is doing, even though we spent most of our talking, talking about the building and the site today.
All right. Thank you, everybody. It means a lot for your support and, uh, I'm grateful we can continue our partnership together. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
No worries.
Yeah, yeah, we really.
All right, go ahead.
And we appreciate, I just, we appreciate your engagement and all of the, uh, professional and thorough work by staff. Um, it was evidenced in the report today, but it was throughout the process and we look forward to continuing to, uh, work through all this project.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Great job. And, uh, um, uh, hopefully, uh, best, best of luck with city council as mentioned and, uh, look forward to hope, hopefully, uh, seeing the built, uh, very soon. So. All right. Um, all right. With that said, I will move on to agenda item four, uh, which is repeat reports from meetings attended. And, uh, those that are on for items three are welcome to, to drop off or stay for the excitement of the remaining, remainder of the meeting. Uh, so, uh, since we're in a virtual setting, I'll just ask everyone individually. So Vice Chair Allen, any meetings you've attended?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gatos?
Uh, other than the Heritage Tree Board of Appeal meeting an hour before this one? Nope.
Okay. How was that?
Uh, good. We had a consensus vote. It was, I think we were all thinking the same thing. It was, uh, it was a very pleasant experience.
All right. It, it occurred to me as, uh, as I was reading the staff report for this one, that, uh, we actually address more heritage trees as part of our regular planning commission role than, than our, that are handled in isolation as part of the Heritage Tree Board. So it's important that we sort of keep all that stuff top of mind as we go through projects as well. Um, all right. So, um, Commissioner Morgan, any meetings?
None, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Niber?
Uh, no, no meetings to speak of, although, uh, if Commissioner Gatos would, uh, uh, confirm that he enjoyed QSR laser tag when he was growing up and playing street hockey in the parking lot there for former JCPenney class, I think you could arrange a laser tag meeting.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm still looking forward to, uh, visiting the, the, the Axe Lounge, uh, which I think has now opened. Uh, that's, uh, um, I'm, I'm interested to, to see how that turned out. So. All right. So, um, all right, uh, Commissioner, uh, Pace, any?
Uh, no, the, uh, the bike pedestrian, uh, committee meeting was, uh, was canceled for the month, so I don't, I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
All right. I assume that, uh, anytime it's not canceled, that you can attend, you'll just reach out to me directly, right?
That's, that's right, Chair, but it was canceled for the month. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I'm just saying. Uh, you and I never talked about protocol, uh, since I'm the alternate on that one, as discussed last time. Since I'm the alternate on that one, as discussed last time, and none for myself. So that closes agenda item four, so agenda item five, actions of the city council. So staff, I believe Ellen, any items, any update?
Yeah, so the the main attraction on the most recent city council meeting was the discussion of the the housing element update. The council received a similar presentation as part of the kickoff to the housing element. As the planning commission did the previous week. I thought it was a really good and interesting discussion among the council. Would certainly encourage members of the commission to, if you have an hour spare to to go back and listen to the, or watch the YouTube video. Of the of the discussion, a lot of good, good comments and thoughts. Many of which echoed what we heard from the from the planning commission in terms of the challenges ahead for the housing element. So, you know, just, just to maybe touch on a couple of of themes. Certainly an interest in looking at best practices and creative ideas for achieving affordability. Discussion about our inclusionary housing requirements and whether those should be reconsidered or relooked at through this process. Questions about just sort of the overall need for coordination with some of our stakeholders like PUSD. And the community and ways that we can really engage across neighborhoods to to make sure the community is really involved in the process. Along with key stakeholders, so those are just a few of the themes. Again, I would, I would, I think it was a good discussion, definitely encourage the planning commission to watch the, watch the video if you have a chance. To catch the full sort of scope of the of the of the conversation there. And then just, just on that note, it looks like our first public, public workshop, community workshop will be on June twenty fourth. So we'll be working on getting that set up and you'll start seeing more advertising around that. And after that, we'll be coming back obviously to the planning commission of others to provide an update and move forward to the next step of the housing element process. So that is the summary of the council discussion, thank you.
All right, very good. All right, moving on to agenda item six, the future planning calendar. So staff, you can go over the future planning calendar report, I believe that's Melinda.
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown, so the three items we have listed were listed previously. And we'll go into great detail, and they're all in the Martin, Trenery, Moore area, existing lots and proposing subdivisions. We are tentatively going to be bringing these to the commission in late June. And that concludes the future planning calendar.
Okay, very good, any change if the next meeting is still, I presume?
At, as of now, yes, we'll, we'll circle back in the next couple of, next couple of days. And let you know if if it's going to be continued or if it will be canceled.
Okay, yeah. Thought I'd ask, all right, so matters initiated by commission members. So I will ask my individual, individually, my colleagues if they have any matters to discuss. So Vice Chair Allen, any?
No matters, thank you.
Wow, all right, Commissioner Gatos.
No matters, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Morgan.
I listened to the city council members' comments about the housing plan as Ellen suggested, and I found it very informative and helpful, thanks.
Okay, no worries, Commissioner Nyberg.
Yes, I did the same as I can did as well, tuned into that last week to look at it. I just wanted to say a big thank you to staff for all the work that they do, and that's it, thanks.
All right, Commissioner Pace.
None, thank you.
All right, in terms of myself, I I need to go back through my email. But I believe we have some mandatory, new mandatory training thing that we have to do, or is there anyone else?
Well.
Training.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you'll have to do, you'll, you'll get a link from the city clerk's office regarding that.
Right, right, okay, now, I need to go back and and see when that's due.
There, sorry, Chair Brown, in April, I think a couple of us attended the the ethics trainings called AB twelve thirty four. Given by the League of California Cities or an organization like that. So it's part of the planning commissioners' academy, so some of us already, we get it, and I confirmed that with the city clerk. That those of us who have done that don't need to repeat it.
Oh, okay, yeah, it it arrived in my inbox around the same time I was doing all similar type of training. With with the company I joined a month ago. And so I was a bit overwhelmed with mandatory corporate training for my my new job. That I need to go back and see when that's due, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Chair Brad, Chair Brown, can I just report back? Vice Chair Allen, at the last meeting, under items initiated by commission, had a couple of questions about a few couple of projects. And just wanted to report back, the the Lucky Shopping Center, the perimeter landscaping. Additions, enhancements and mulch were completed in conjunction, shortly thereafter, the Lucky's grand opening. So I wanted to report back on that item, as well as the Iron Horse Real Estate and Home Decor. Has installed the additional signage, the the hanging pedestrian sign and the window signage and the hours as requested. So wanted to just report that back.
Hey, I'm sorry, Chair, can I ask one quick question to Melinda, follow up?
Yeah, sure.
Do we have a sense, I know that Christiansen's is going out of business, very, very sad to see that, you know, go in and and pay your respects. That's been there forever. Do we have a sense of what's going to move into that, into that site? I mean, that was two storefronts there on Main Street, that's, that's a big deal.
Yeah, I'm very sad too, I've bought three pairs of boots in the last three months, so, so and lots of socks. So no, at this time, unless Ellen, you've heard anything else, I I've not heard of of any, any tenant, future tenants. Or any interest other, other than the, my understanding is that the property owner is interested in selling the building.
Yeah, the for sale signs out front now, so I was just curious about the the status there, thank you.
All right, very good, yeah, I'll check out the Iron Horse signage tomorrow. When I drop off a bike to the bike shop.
I will as well.
Yeah.
Go into Christiansen's too, check it out.
Yeah, I've, yeah, I've.
Chair, Chair, I can see you in boots and a hat.
You seem like a really, a really horsey, a horsey type.
Do they have baseball caps?
I I actually.
They don't. It's a lot of, it's a different kind of hat.
If we weren't at the end of the meeting, I would turn off the video and I'd go get my cowboy hat and boots and bring them, bring them to the session.
Love it.
Who knows, maybe next time. But yeah, I I actually have those from from when I got married in Texas. And my wife is born in Texas, so.
Oh.
I do have a pair of cowboy boots and 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 a hat, but I I can't say I wear, wear them on that regular basis.
But I'm impressed that you still have them.
Yes, but I could, could argue I'm a pack rat as a result, but. All right, very good, well, since there's no further business, other than teasing the chair. We will adjourn the meeting, so thank you very much, everyone, for your time. And again, Eric, fabulous job, very thorough, and thanks for the help with the Ten X project. You're welcome, thank you.